Good morning. The May 16th, 2023 work session is now in order. I just want to let everybody know we're going to be taking a hard stop recess at 11 o'clock or like at 10:59. So there's some special order to get through some of our stuff. I did want to discuss a couple of the things, but Paul, real call please.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Hand? Good morning, Mr. Lindell.
Good morning.
Here we go. Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Guys, before we get to our first topic, I wanted to take a second and I wanted to discuss, Ms. Terry is here from our blast program. And just so everybody knows, since you came to the meeting, there's a quota. And what they're doing right now is they're bringing in all of their summer sales. So the blast students go ahead and they make all kinds of different items and then they put them up for sale. And I wanted to give Ms. Terry an opportunity to speak. Can you explain it better than I do? Because I could go and spend a bunch of money and, you know what I mean, I give you some stuff and I give it out to my kids and I think it's great, so.
Hey, thank you so much for this opportunity. Our blast program is a transition program for our young adults with unique abilities. And one of the things that they learn is school-based enterprise, which allows them to learn project skills, selling skills, that first exposure to vocational pre-employment, soft skills training. So this sale today actually carries them in to the beginning of next year. They sell their products and that helps them with leisure rec activities, community experiences, being young adults in the community, going out for lunch, planning activities like that. That supports their program. So we do this twice a year. We have a holiday sale and then we have an end of the year sale. And that will be happening today from 10 till 2.
So I think when we break at 11 something, we'll have an opportunity, after we do some of these, I'll ask everybody to stop. Maybe we'll take a lunch or something and we can come through and say hi to the kids. Did you have something to say?
In the program? Yes. Yes, we did.
It's why we're in here, because they take precedence.
Right, right. So can we stop like in 45 and have a quick minute to run through the rest of the course at 11 o'clock?
It usually takes me about an hour to get through there. I'm just, I'm out there talking to students.
We need a personal shopper. Thank you.
Well, I talk to the kids, you get them excited about what they made. Part of the conversation is not only purchasing it and making them feel like number one, but also listening to them tell you about how they made it so that they then, it's a process.
That makes sense.
So I would say if we could do that. The other issue that I had is, is that I asked, I said, hey, can I just use my card? Just so everybody knows, for some reason, there seems like we haven't gotten to that place. So you, you're, we have the right cash?
Transition resource teacher. So one of the hurdles that we experience is they can only accept cash or check.
Yeah.
So when they, when they're out in the community, they often do farmer's market sale, craft fair, things like that, and within their school. But they can, at this time, they can only accept cash or check.
But Terry, do you think that inhibits the sales of the kids?
We do have a lot of questions about that and it's come up in the past of how can we use, give them maybe a Venmo account, some other form of payment, something along the lines that they do the book sales every year within their schools.
Mr. Sinowski, is there a way that we can make that happen?
Yeah, I should.
Okay, all right. Ms. Terry, can you get with Mr. Sinowski and see if that's something that we can do?
Thank you so.
And then we can, you know what I mean, make that happen. Because I think you go over those, you know, Mr. Terry, for all the stuff that you do, taking these kids to farmer's markets and selling things and everything else, if there's any way we can help promote the program in any way, please let us know.
Yeah, real class, Ms. Terry, could you share with us some of the things that we would expect to see in the market for any of this listening that might want to come down and look at that? So they're responsible for coming up to all student-based, student-led, things that they think that would be popular out in the community that is a sustainable product. So for instance, Merritt Island, our most recent site, they are making organic homemade dog treats. And so that's a perishable item. So then their turnaround, you could preorder sales and things like that. Another, our Clear Lake site, they sell soy candles right up there with all the very popular ones that you hear on the market. The production, what scents they use, the labeling, the packaging, all that goes into the school-based enterprise and all student-led. They're all their inputs put into what they do. They have soaps, homemade lotions, all organic down in the south end of Bayside. And cafes running out of heritage for the faculty and staff on Friday there. So it's, it's a great opportunity and for our young adults that are entering, exiting our public school, because going into the community, it's a wonderful experience. Thank you so much. I brought my cash, I'll be up there. Thank you. I can. Appreciate it.
No, I don't get it. We need an ATM, not, you know, an ATM in the building just for everybody.
Again, that's a Cindy Lozinski question.
I'm sure they will do IVs if they know.
No, we don't do IVs, I'll bring the cash.
Thank you.
Anybody, if you guys have questions, it's Ms. Terry and then we'll see you guys in a little bit. Tell the kids we're excited.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Ms. Hand, you lock all of these doors so everybody has to go through that door.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hand, the first topic is facilities service budget presentation.
Good morning.
Next is government communications presentation.
Okay, so a couple of things. I wanted to introduce my team. If you haven't met our team, Dave Lindeman is our director of planning and project management. And Dave, you have a copy of the presentation and we had someone from the public committee to chair that, the current of that. And next to Dave is Jim Powers. Jim is our director of environmental health, safety, I can't even say it, environmental health, safety and code compliance. So he keeps us all safe. Steve Griffin is a member of our team, manager of environmental health and safety. Jim Ross is our director of maintenance. So when things aren't going well, we chat with Jim. Richard Boat is the maintenance coordinator and he's the guy who keeps track of our money in maintenance. And then James Agani. James, I think your title is energy manager. James is the guy that knows the code for air conditioning. So if you want to be hotter or colder, James is the guy. And I got to tell you, we, I don't know, stole maybe isn't the right word, but we, we took him from ET. He was a, he's a tech out of Sierra and, you know, we're over at Sierra High School for a lot of stuff and I noticed, our team noticed, you know, James is like a go-getter kind of guy. And so when this position came up, it was in like the computer realm of air conditioning, like, hey, James, can't you come think about coming to work for facilities? And we are so happy to have him. He's been a game changer in our department and has just made such a great difference. I think you saw recently, we received $100,000 energy prize that is really not a strings attached kind of prize, but its purpose is to do better training for folks managing energy in our school district. And James is going to be leading that effort and hopefully that will lead to us saving money on our power bill. That's kind of the long-term goal of that is to get some replicable practices out in our schools. So just wanted to highlight you a little bit because we do appreciate you and our entire facilities team. So thank you guys for being here today. So I'm wearing my facilities assistant superintendent hat this morning as I do this presentation. And I'm going to be talking to you about our facility services budget, which I have had almost no involvement in over the last six weeks. So I'm going to talk a little bit about process. And if we have detailed questions, our team's here and they'll be helping me answer those questions. This is sort of a, I would term it a pilot project. In, in our past, in budget preparation, we've rolled up our budgets and presented them to the board in June. What we're doing this year is giving you all kind of a detailed look of what services our departments provide and how we pay for those services. And hopefully we'll get some feedback from you as to the depth and breadth of this presentation. Is it what you'd like to see? Is it enough? Is it too much? So I volunteered to go first, just to kind of see how it goes. So please keep in mind that the detailed budgets that you have as a complement to this presentation, those are still a work in progress. They still may change a little bit, but generally speaking, they're in the ballpark. So, okay, talk about that again. We might be back. So if you have a lot of questions and our budget is that incomplete that I feel like we've made some major changes, I might come around at the, at the end and come back to you. So the way I'm going to do this presentation, I'm going to start with kind of the overview of what we do, who we are as facilities, and then talk about how we're funded, talk about how to read our budget. Because it, it is not easy to read a district line item budget, so there's some key things that you all need to know. And then I'm going to talk about some lessons learned over our experiences and some of the things that we're thinking about going forward. So our why, right? We connect facilities to our mission here at EPS. We do work so that our teachers can teach, our students can learn. Learning environment is critical. There's research on that. It is important. And so what we do is significant and a vital part of our educational mission. So we don't take that role lightly. And we coordinate and collaborate with our educational side of the house. So not only do we keep the lights on, but we also do things like really cool projects, the Aqua Lab at Cocoa Beach, the aviation lab, the things that are, that make our districts unique, we have a hand in those too. So we're pretty big, pretty big. As a facilities organization, this is a lot of assets. We have 12.8 million square feet and is growing. Got 84, seem to be 85 schools, three special centers, lots of office buildings. And the average age of our facilities is somewhere between 45 and 50 years old. So it's not like we have brand new stuff. And so we have a lot of renovations going on, constantly renewing our, our assets so that they're usable as schools. And these are complicated projects. When we do our renewal projects, you know, just a simple renovation can really, really grow in scope as you get into things and you're working with 50-year-old stuff. You know, you start with the air conditioning and then you realize the electrical system doesn't work and oh, by the way, the doors are leaking and it just goes on and on. So it's a real puzzle to try to make sure that we are applying our resources effectively in our school buildings. So now I'm going to get to the boring part of our presentation. And I'm going to talk about our organization. So this is the org chart that kind of shows you how facilities are organized. I mentioned we have planning and project management, environmental health, safety and code compliance, and plan operations and maintenance. Under EH and S, we have our building department. And in the past, we had a, an employee as our building official. School districts are allowed to have a building official that is in-house. Our building official passed away and our, we were unable to find a replacement building official, so we have contracted that service. And that has worked really pretty well for us, but it is, it is kind of a different way of doing business. Our in-house, our contracted building official lives with us kind of through the time period leading up to summer construction, through summer construction and through substantial completion of our projects and then is about half-time the rest of the year. And then also under Jim Powers' department is, is our ESF custodial team. So that, that budget is also in facilities and is under Jim's purview. So this gives you a little bit more detail about our planning and project management department. We have a series of project managers and construction managers, many of whom you have seen out of the schools, working on our projects. And we also have a planning function. Karen Black is our manager of intergovernmental coordination and planning. She's the person that does the student accommodation plan, that does the enrollment projections. You will see her at our workshop on May 30th, talking about our educational plan survey. So she's the person that kind of keeps track of our enrollment statistics and works very closely with budgeting. So she plays a key role. Also, we have a team of in-house construction crews, kind of construction light. These are folks that if you need a wall put up or you need some minor work done in the school, we deploy these folks. They are doing a lot of our front office renovations to improve security, so you'll see that team around, seen them at ESF. We do small projects for the schools, so we, although our, our small capital projects team, and I'll talk more about that a little later. This is our building official department with the contracted services. We do have an administrative secretary that supports that function. That position is currently vacant and about to be filled out. Jim Powers, again, is our director over environmental health and safety. And they have functions for EH and S, custodial services and code compliance. They do a lot of the custodial training for our custodians down at the schools. So the custodians in the schools are actually budgeted and work for the schools. Jim's function is kind of a support function in the custodial realm, more so than, than custodial's functions in the schools. We do have our custodial strike team that is funded through ESER that is in that, that group. And they will be sunsetting and we'll be finding those folks' positions out in our custodial roles in our schools. So let's see, oh, on the environmental health and safety side, these are the folks that deal with, you know, indoor air quality concerns, hazard abatement, playground safety, that type of thing. So that's the crew in that room. Typically, when we have an event such as a fire, something like that, or a flood, our EH and S team responds first and they kind of help us mitigate whatever disaster is going on. And then the maintenance team comes in, helps with the cleanup. And then our projects team comes in if it's big enough where we need to actually do projects work. This happened at Freedom 7, Kopea, where we had the fire. So our, our teams work very closely together to get the work done so that we can continue our educational mission. This is just a snapshot of the maintenance functions. We're organized by geographic areas, sort of south, central, north area, maintenance supervisors. There are two supervisors in each area so we can make sure that we're always serving our schools. And they have teams of trades workers that work under them. And then we have, we have some countywide services that Tony Terese, you may have run across him, he's the guy that's been doing the flooring projects, the media center carpets and so I've been sending some pictures of some of the work that he's been doing. We also have Steve Avriel, who's been doing our playground assessments and helping our schools with the playground projects that are in the sales cert tax program. We have some folks in maintenance that are doing the LED lighting conversions. So we have some projects where we do some contracted, some in-house folks. Water fountain conversions to the water bottle, flower fillers, that's been done through our maintenance team. So they have helped us out with some of our minor district-wide projects as well. So this is a budget overview by cost center. If you look at our, our line item budgets, you'll see these, I think there's seven or eight different cost centers. And so this gives you just an overview and shows you the salaries and the expenses that are associated with that budget. And you'll see for the most part, our, our salaries are 90-ish percent of our, of our budgets. And then there's three budgets that are control accounts. And you'll see these highlighted in green. What those are, are contracted services. So there's no salary associated with them. And so when you buy that contracted service, it is coming out of that budget, but then it is expensed out to our schools. So you'll see that in three different budgets. There's one in 9560, environmental health and safety. There are two of those in plan operations and maintenance. And the reason that there's two is we have two different funding sources for the control accounts in plan operations and maintenance. One of them is the general fund side and there are certain expenditures that are only allowable on the general fund side. And then the other one is the local capital funding source. And those are the O3s and those are, those are projects that we can use capital for. So there's two different control accounts. And I want to call your attention to this, this number right here. I pulled these numbers out of kind of current information. This is the capital control account for maintenance and its expense, expenses at 7.5 million. They're only budgeted at about 5 million. And so that's going to become important later as I get into how we are funded. So just want to call your attention to that number. So talked about control expenses. These are some of the activities that cannot be funded through capital, like swimming pool maintenance, mowing and grounds, administrative personnel. So that's on the general fund side. Also wanted to note that the cost of our annual service contracts have increased. So you will see in our line item budgets, if you're comparing them to three-year averages or comparing them to this will be your 22 or current 23, you might see some increases, especially in those control accounts because of the increases of those contracts.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a quick question.
Sure.
On tools and grounds. We can purchase equipment, lawnmowers, that stuff from capital for lawn.
Right. We can't pay for lawn mowing services.
Got it. That's all I needed to do. That's one quick.
Yep. Okay. So just a quick note on ESER. We have a couple of ESER themes in our budget. HVAC filters was $100,000, two years at $50,000. Contracted coil cleaning, that's something we're, we're doing district-wide to try to improve our energy efficiency as well as improve our, our indoor air quality. So this is, it's sort of a pilot project and it's sort of a best practice. So we've just gotten started on that. Jim, you've got a few, few schools underway with coil cleaning?
Oh yeah, we've done probably six schools.
About six schools.
We have probably 10 under contract.
Yeah, so that's, that's something that we're funding with ESER, but most likely you will see that in a future budget request after ESER sunsets. It's probably a once every, what, four or five year kind of, kind of practice. And then I had previously mentioned the custodial strike team. None of these are in our budget. These, these are direct funded through the ESER budget in, that's funded 44, something 4490, most of ours.
So what has the custodial strike team been doing this year since we?
We've been filling holes in custodial vacancies at schools.
Okay. Primarily. But we can still fund it through ESER. If there's still.
Still custodial support.
Okay.
So our general fund control account uses, this is what we use them for in 9560, the environmental health and safety side. So periodic inspection and testing services, things like fire suppression systems, test control, fire hydrants, indoor air quality testing and abatement. So these are contracted services in the 9560 control account. In 9562, these are the general fund control account uses in plan operations and maintenance. So pool service, athletic fields maintenance, small pools, equipment rental, which became significant this year, elevator inspection and generator inspection. So those are the types of services you'll see in the general fund control account, plan operations and maintenance budget. So this chart gives you the facilities operating expenses by cost center and shows you whether it's funded by general fund, capital or mixed. So you can see it's kind of a mixed bag, right? Our facilities admin is funded solely through the general fund as is ESF custodial. Environmental health and safety is funded through general fund. It does have some control accounts in capital and then permitting and inspections, that is fully funded through capital. Plan operations and maintenance is mixed and planning and project management is mixed and I'll go into some detail on that. This shows you our staffing by cost center and you can see that we have some significant vacancies primarily in plan operations and maintenance as well as planning and project management. And I'm going to talk a little bit about both of those functions in a minute. Okay. So in planning and project management, we have a number of vacant positions. Three project field coordinators and project field coordinators are the folks that assist our project managers. And we're missing one construction manager, two project admin specialists and one facility maintenance tech. This position works on the in-house construction crew and we're actively working on filling that. We've been trying to fill the project admin specialists for a while. We're currently interviewing for those. Those are the folks that move the money and the purchase orders around. And then the construction folks. We, we try to right-size our staffing for those functions. So depending on how much work we have going on and the availability of people to hire, we may or may not fill those positions. These are all funded through capital chargebacks. So what that means is these folks all keep time sheets of some type. And so if they're working on a sales tax project, so they work for an hour on a sales tax project, their, the value of their time is charged back to that project. So they're budgeted sort of on the general fund side. As you're looking at our budget, you'll see salaries and these are budgeted on the general fund side, but there's also a chargeback that comes back in to, to pay for that service out of various capital funds. So it might be out of sales tax, it might be out of local capital, it might be out of a grant project, it might be out of food and services if we're working on their projects. So the, these positions are funded through chargebacks and then we, especially on the construction side, we add and, not subtract, but we add and attrite out depending on the need for those employees. So let's see, I think that's it. So that's where we are with vacancies in planning and project management. Plan operations, out of the vacancies that I showed you, four of those are grounds technicians and we have already given up those positions to use those resources for additional mowing contracted services. We did that several months ago and went through the board. They're still showing on our har, but they probably won't be in the next couple of days. So in terms of the data that I provided, those still are showing as vacancies, but when you see our salary budgets in the formal presentation of the budget, our salary budgets will be less by probably, you know, 150,000 or so because we're, those positions are being eliminated. And then we have several in the trades, right? These positions are funded through capital also. And they're funded through capital differently than the project and planning and project management side. On the planning and project management side, those are done by chargebacks. On this side, they are funded through a, it's, it's a portion of the maintenance budget. And let me show you some high charts. Oh, before I do that, overtime. In our, in our world, my view of overtime is a little different. I'm not trying to restrict overtime, I'm trying to encourage overtime because we have an infinite amount of work to do and we're short-staffed. So you will see a pretty significant number in our overtime budget and that is because we need it. We need people to do work. So if we're not doing it, either during normal business hours or during overtime, we're having, we have to bring in contracted services. So it's really a balance. So overtime in our world is pretty like a good thing. At least that's my view of it. We also have to be very responsive to getting our schools up and running. So if something happens at, you know, 5 o'clock on a Friday evening, we are there, we are working, we're getting it done. And so we want to make sure that our overtime budgets are recognized as an important part of our workload and important part of serving our schools. So if you're looking at our budget, it's on the expense side, it's not on the salary side. So there's a project number 001991, it says overtime clearly in the line item budget, but it's not up on the salary piece, it's down below on the expense side. Okay. This is the complicating part. So I want to talk about the relationship to the capital budget. So Cindy presented the capital budget a month or so ago and you saw a couple of things in there. There was a $10.3 million transfer to maintenance. That's the, the piece that funds to some extent staff and to some extent stuff in the maintenance budget, those expenses that were capital eligible, okay? So when we look at the whole pie for, for FY '23 capital, it was about, I think, $90 million, right, was the whole capital. And so 38 million went to debt service, 6 million went to property insurance, and then there's this 10.3 million that went to maintenance salaries and operating. And then the other capital projects is the, the amount that we used for the capital project plans that you see, the, oh, let's see, the athletic fields, educational technology, school buses, the mowing equipment, all of those typical capital projects that you see every year, that's this company, right? So keep in mind, here's this piece, maintenance gets 10.3 million, other capital projects 35.7 million. This is a pie chart that shows the other capital projects pie. This pie, there's two things. There's facilities capital renewal, that's 6.3 million, that comes to facilities and we use that throughout the year. We pay for things like OESF flooding or Kopea fire or various capital renewal projects that we need to do. And then this 300,000 small projects team, this is a new, this is new this year, this year, this 300,000 funds that facility maintenance team that's in Dave's budget that I talked about 10 or 15 minutes ago. So the guys that are doing these little small construction projects, instead of, you know, allocating every half hour, we asked if we could have small projects. every half hour, we ask if we could have a small projects team and we keep track of their hours and charge it to this small projects team, 300,000 that's set aside for them. So here's where this becomes important. Facilities capital renewal, 6.3 million, I use some of that money to supplement the maintenance budget. So when you saw that 7.5 million in terms of expenses in the control account, part of that 7.5 comes from this and part of it comes from that. Because when Jim runs out of money in, I don't know, when do you run out of money? Usually January-ish?
February.
Yeah, January, February. He runs out of money and he says, hey, I ran out of money. And I will send him, I think we're up to 1.65 million out of this number over to this side. And so that transfer happens so that Jim can keep operating. Because otherwise, Jim answers the phone and says, nice to chat with you, but we can't do anything to help you. And so I always reserve quite a bit of this to supplement that. And you might ask, okay, why don't we just budget appropriately? And we are moving in that direction. Every year, we add a little bit to this. This year, fiscal year '24's capital budget has another million that goes in this direction because it's been patterned year after year after year. What we don't want to do is over-budget the capital to maintenance because then we're not budgeting projects. So it's kind of this balancing act where we try to budget enough here, but I also have a cushion over here that I can use to make sure that maintenance can get through the end of the year. So that's how that works.
Cindy, before you leave that pie, for me, how did capital budget conversation every year, we talked about, as I can remember, that we're pretty much putting max, we're maxed out of what we can transfer from the capital to the general or cover, cover on the capital side of general type expenses? That's that 10.3, right?
Correct.
So when you're able to add a million, that's just the cost of those things going up?
It's the cost of the expended, like the contracted services side versus the labor side. Let me show you, I'm going to try to get to that. So here's, this is fiscal year '23 plant ops budget. It's kind of broken down with salaries and expenditures. The salaries are 5.6 million. And Wendy Knippel, who manages capital for finance, she does a really good job making sure that we use capital money for eligible personnel expenses. So she makes sure that we are spending it on tradespeople, not on administrators. So she does calculations every year and that comes out at about 5.6 million. And then the budget is 5 million. So we ended up with 10.6, not 10.3 this year. We're still trying to figure out where that extra 300,000 came from. And I think, I think the, I think the 6.3 is given 300,000 that has not been accounted for yet on my side. But regardless, this is that 10 point something million that is here and it's about half and half salaries and operating. And so we keep enough in there for salaries and then as they are spending money on getting work done, basically contracted services and buying things that are capital eligible, I end up making an additional transfer from the 6.3 million that I had budgeted on the capital side as a facility renewal project. So Ms. Campbell, in answer to your question, if we, for example, hired more air conditioning techs, okay, we could up that number up. But we are funding as much of the pie as we can fund right now with the labor expenses that we have. Did I answer your question? Okay. Okay. All right. So for fiscal year '24, this kind of shows you the same sort of thing. So our LCI control account is again at about 5 million. We've requested and the board has generally acknowledged the additional million in the capital workshops, that's going to bump them up to six. And then I'm assuming that I'm going to have to still supplement that budget by another 1.5 million out of the facility capital renewal project that's in the capital plan. So we really work together. This is a, it's an effort to get work done. And I work really hard with our team to understand the different funding sources and the way we can get a particular piece of work done. And so sometimes our only choice is operating, sometimes our choice is capital, and then sometimes we're looking at capital projects or looking at SRTAC. So it's a puzzle to try to make sure that we use our resources as effectively as possible.
So can I ask a question? I got one second. So when you're looking at this, the facilities capital renewal budget of 6.3 million dollars, it sounds like by the time everything comes out of it, it really ends up being 3 million dollars, not 6 point whatever. So when you're looking at projecting what facilities are we going to renew, how are you going to invest this money? Are you factoring that based off of obviously a lesser number, right, 3 million?
Yes. So with the sales tax, which is pretty fortunate, most of our major renewal projects are SRTAC eligible. Now, if allocation to the progress schools changes dramatically as a result of recent legislation, we're still kind of looking at that, that's going to be a different equation because our sales tax revenue has been very strong. We've been able to use some of the extra money, it's not really extra, but money above projections to do renewal projects that we need to do and working through the Citizens Oversight Committee. If that changes, then that's going to change the equation on this side as well. If I've got less SRTAC to work with, I'm going to be much more deliberate about our capital side with capital renewal project. But honestly, I worry about things that just come up. We have hurricane damage. We have hurricane damage, we go fix it. We don't wait on FEMA. We have flooded ESF, we go fix it. We have a fire, we go fix it. Just did a contract at Kopeina for 700 and something thousand dollars and half of that is fire damage. None of that would have happened without the fire. That's coming out in capital renewal and eventually we may get some insurance money back, but I don't want to say, hey, we can't fix it until we get insurance back. So I use that account to get started on projects. So I, we have in the capital funds, some big projects in FY24, I use this year's money to get started. We get design done, we try to get ahead so we can execute them next year when the money's available. Sometimes I use that money toward, like this time of year, if I have a capital project in next year's budget that we want to get done during the summer. Basketball goals is probably a good example, relatively small, important to our schools. I want to try to do some of those now. So if I have a good chunk of money left at this time of year, I'll use it in advance, basically, the project in FY24.
And in the years past, I'm sure you've looked at this, have, do you tend to see yourself at the end of the year with a significant amount of money? So you are, just out of curiosity, is that pretty normal, do you think, as a trend?
So I intentionally get to the end of the year with a significant amount of money.
Okay.
I watch this every year and I've looked at prior years and tried to make sure that about this time of year, I have about three and a half million dollars left.
Okay.
To make sure I can continue to do any of the work that Jim needs to do, anything that might happen in hurricane season. And I know, like right now, I have a contract that I don't have yet for some ESF work that we need to do. There's probably a handful of other things that I don't, like I want to make sure that I can fund everything that we need to fund over the summer. So that tends to get spent down shortly after the summer.
Okay.
But I try to go into the summer with a pretty good reserve just because we don't get new capital until December.
Yeah.
So that's the other piece, is I got to get through the next several months before we get...
So it does carry over for you then?
Yes, all the capital carries over.
Okay.
Correct? Yep.
So I noticed on this little chart that we don't have anything budgeting for preventative maintenance. So I know we're trying to do more and more preventative maintenance, so where is that coming from?
So this is the day area of how we, how we do our budgeting. So at some point, I think we had, probably, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, the board said, here's money for preventative maintenance. And it was a set amount and finance set up a project number for that set amount that the board dedicated for preventative maintenance. So this doesn't mean we don't do preventative maintenance, it's just a blank line in the budget.
So it gets absorbed into the other...
So as we are, as we are working through our budgets with the budget office this year, we're finding these things and we're fixing them. So next year's will be cleaner because we really are looking at the budgets very closely this year.
So Ms. Anne, if you could explain to the new board members that have gone through a hurricane with us, what that looks like to FEMA, how we fund all the expenses and all that stuff? Just so that, because that always comes up, we always have a conversation in accounting, right? So if you could just do a 30 second, here's what it is.
Okay. So we do an enormous amount of paperwork so that we can get reimbursed two to three years later.
Wow.
That's the sum of it.
And salaries.
Everything, yeah. It just, it takes a long, I don't know, have we, Cindy, have we been...
We've been through three years.
Yeah.
So I got it.
Wow. So having some capital reserve, you know, I'm saving a little money, I know Cindy's saving a little money to be able to get our schools back in operation is important because we don't, FEMA doesn't rescue us.
Yeah.
It reverses us later.
No.
Okay, so here's how you read a budget. And this really applies to all of our budgets, but I'm going to give you some facility-specific examples. And if you go online, this is a link, and you pull up this presentation and you click on this link, it'll bring you to the accounting code manual that gives you a broader perspective than what I'm just going to talk about from the facilities perspective. All expenditures are by funding string. And the string has a fund code that's three digits, a site code that's four digits, site code meaning ESF is 9860 and, you know, Coco Beach is 5011. Those are your site codes. Project number is a six-digit code and that is sort of a project name. And project is kind of loosely defined. It's not necessarily a, you know, build a school project, although it could be. It might be overtime, it might be salaries, it might be fire hydrant maintenance. There's a lot of different project numbers. And if you look, if you look at the accounting code manual, you'll see there's probably four or five different different project numbers. And then there's a whole nother set of project numbers that are SRTAC related and those typically start with fives or sixes. And the object code, that describes what we're doing. So we deal a lot in capital, my capital budgets are all six something something. Like 681 is contracted services, 686 is labor, 684 is engineering. If we're outside, it's 687. So there's some rhyme and reason to the numbers. And then the operating side, we're mostly in the threes and fours. We have a lot of supplies and a lot of contracts. And then the program, that's the last three digits. Most of ours are 000, our control accounts are 999. Other program numbers are used for school-based functions, so we're not doing school-based stuff. So that's why ours are kind of different than everybody else's. So this chart shows you the different codes that are used in our funding strings. Here's an example at the bottom of one of our funding strings and how you can read it. Fund 100 is our general fund, so it's ours and it's everybody else's. These are the cost centers in our facilities operating budgets and they're typically starting with 95 something, other than ESF custodial is 9860. These are our common project numbers. So all the salaries are in 001002, or I'm sorry, 00101. And then something called non-staffing plan expenses, those are typical operating expenses, so that number is 001002. And then common things, that seems to be in everyone's budget, 001147. Capital chargeback, that's 001870. Those are expenses that are eligible for capital reimbursement. I mentioned previously overtime. And then in EHMS's budget and maintenance budget, the control budgets, you will see 002 with different three-digit endings and 003 with different three-digit endings. The 002 projects are the general fund funded projects and the 003 projects are the capital funded project numbers. And then these are the functions. We are typically in 7400, 7900, and 8100 for our functions. And then these are the object codes and the program codes. So this example, the string that's 19562, 002939, 8100, 354999. This is in our control account, it's a general fund budget, it's swimming pool maintenance, specialized services. So the, these things all give you more information about what you're seeing. And so when you look at our budget pages, and this is, this is the same for everybody's budget, you'll see our cost center, you'll see a project number, and then under the project number, you'll see function numbers, and then under the function numbers, you'll see the object codes. Oh boy, I don't want to touch anything. And so when you look through our budgets, you'll see common things like travel, telephone, supplies, and they may be in six different function codes in a budget. So if you, if you want to know what we're spending on supplies, you might have to look in four, five, six different places.
Yeah.
We've been working with finance, I think that's a, that's a process improvement district-wide that we think probably when you see your budget, you may see some roll-up of those common things, so it's a little easier to see those lineups. And then this sheet is the work in progress budget matrix, it's just an example. I've given you all of our budget sheets for our department. It shows 2021, 2022 actuals, three-year average, 23 adopted, 23 amended. So this amended column reflects any movement around that has been done. And then the actuals, look at this carefully, some of them are March 31st and some of them are December 31st. So they give you a picture of how things are being spent so far. And then there's a column that says reviewed with the budget office. Our departments have all submitted their budgets and then most of us have sat down with Cindy and Diane and have really gone through line item by line item. Diane asked great questions, asking us to justify each and every line item. And so generally speaking, we've, you know, landed on a number that we can all live with after discussion. And then the comments section gives you some more detail about what those numbers are for, what are we actually spending money on? Some of our contracted services, you know, some of travel, what conferences are we going to, that type of thing. So I wanted to be very explicit about how the district's money is being used. So this is just an example of one sheet, I think there's 34 pages of this that I've provided to you as part of this item. So if you look at it and you have some questions, please give any of us a call, I'm happy to sit down and go over it with you. I wanted to give you kind of the overview of our budget. Okay, and lessons learned. So mowing has been a challenge for us over the last several years and I believe that we are doing better. We moved some resources over to contracted services and we've got our staff deployed a little differently. Jim's done a kind of good job trying to right-size that so we can operate effectively and I feel pretty confident we're doing better. Probably will see us asking for a little bit more in the contracted services as well. Supply chain issues are killing us. We have, we have spent a lot of money on chiller rental this year because we have to. So when we think we're getting a chiller or something breaks and we need a new chiller and it used to be three, four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks, now it's like, oh, it'll be here in two years. And I'm exaggerating a little bit, but not a lot. So that has created all sorts of problems. On the electrical side, the other thing that that's done is we do our work in the summer. If the equipment doesn't arrive before summer, then we don't have this summer, then the equipment arrives somewhere over here, but we can't shut the school down. So now we got to wait till either Christmas break or next summer to do the work. So it's extending the length of our contracts, we're extending our general conditions and all of that in our contract. So it's having some pretty significant impacts. We're able to absorb them with our sales tax projects for the most part, but most of our contracted, you know, if you compare last year's kind of project to this year's same project, it's more typically relating to supply chain issues and just the cost of things that have gone up. Our contracted services, and so I think in Jim's EHMS budget, you'll see a lot of, this is the new contract price in our explanation. So those services are becoming more expensive.
Is that looking like it's, looking to ever get better? I mean.
I would, I would say it's not, it's not exponentially increasing like it was, it's kind of stabilized, but it's more than it was, more than we're used to. So we're kind of adjusting to a new normal. So we may be doing less projects. Great example, we've been working on beach volleyball courts. So, hey, ask one of my project managers, give me a good price for beach volleyball court. He took what it costs, doubled it, it'll be $150,000. Okay, great, so a budget of two, one is 250. So that's where we're at. And, you know, we can look at different contracting methods, we can, we can decrease the scope. But we're always wrestling with, do we do a less than stellar job and pay for that later, like we are now? Like down the road, if we didn't do the curb, if we didn't do things to protect that asset, it just makes it more expensive later. So we're always wrestling with do it right the first time, or do it, do it less expensively. So, you know, that's, that's where we are. I do want to say that our new work order system, we've been in place for about a year, year and a half now, producing great data, great data for capital project programming. Jim sent me a list of here's our problem chillers, here's our problem cooling towers. We know what assets we have now. We can do a capital plan that makes sense based on the life expectancy of our equipment. So really excited about that. That's, that's a big, big leap forward for facilities that we've been able to put into place. Couple things looking forward, HB1 and other legislation may impact our, how our resources get deployed to charter schools, may impact our enrollment, which will impact our resource, like there's lots of potential impacts. I, I think we don't know. We might need, we might need some consultant resources to analyze enrollment impacts as we move forward, but we want to see where we, where we go with that. Talked about sales tax. I, I do want to just remind you, every time I have an opportunity to be in front of the board, I talk about sustainability, we have added lots of assets over the last four or five years. We've added thousands of cameras, we've added thousands of feet of fence. All of these things require ongoing maintenance. So good stuff, but keep in mind, we're gonna have to maintain them, so that's going to drive some of our budgeting in the future. And then just the concept of keeping the lights on continues to rise. Facility assessment update, this was a game changer for us several years ago, and we feel like we want to do that again, probably by 2025, so just a heads up, that's something that we'll be bringing to our budget cycle next year. And then doing business differently might lead to different staffing needs. So I, I haven't proposed this yet, I might ask for a senior budget management analyst type of a position. We could do a lot more analytics in facilities in terms of return on investment, we could do tighter budgeting, we could do tighter projections, better capital plans, all those things. But we're all busy running around putting fires out, so having a position that has that skill set might be worthwhile. Thinking about a playground inspector, we're doing some great work with playgrounds and want to bring some of that potentially in-house. And then we've been concerned about more technology in facilities. I, you know, Russell and I wrestle over James Yanni because he is the guy that crosses both of our worlds, but our, our air conditioning systems, our lighting system, a lot of things require technology backgrounds, and our job descriptions are not really geared towards that. Our intercom systems, just a lot of technology coming into facilities, so, you know, that's a, that's a thing that we'll be considering as we go forward, how we, how we adjust our staffing resources, how we adjust our job descriptions to make sure we're keeping up at the times. Partnership opportunities. I want to talk about our meeting yesterday, we had, there were a project that I think most of you are familiar with, to rebuild a transportation facility somewhere. We've been working with LaGuarda County on potentially using a site that they have on the west end of Ogali, west of 95. And they've been terrific, like this is a great, great idea, great site, great location. We went ahead and had it analyzed for wetlands and native species and all that and stuff. This site was perfect, except it has 12 feet of muck that we would need to excavate in order to use the site. So we're kind of like, oh. So.
Yeah.
So that's probably not gonna work, even though we're really excited that we can have a potential partnership with the county. So we're sitting around last week, kind of mulling, we're like, I don't know what we're gonna do about this. And one of Rashad's folks says, hey, you know, I'm part of the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee, you know, they do transportation work, like we could, you know, get a consultant through them, like, that is an awesome idea. So we wandered across the street yesterday and met with their executive director and said exactly that, hey, you guys have transportation consultants, could we partner with you to, to try to find the right solution for our transportation department? Because as we got to talking about it, maybe West of Galley's good, but maybe South-South Bravard is even better, maybe we should look at the whole thing systemically. With HB1, maybe there are different transportation options. And then I got to talking with their executive director about, well, you guys have Space Coast Area Transit, if we can have different options, can you help us with those options? So really, this may go nowhere, but I'm telling you about it because it's, it's an exciting new way to think about how we do business. And bringing in partners who have resources that can help us, and then we can help them too, like it's a great opportunity for partnering. Community school concepts, you know, lots of different ways, Endeavor was a great model, we're doing more in Endeavor, Kyler School, you know, they, how we use our facilities, I think, can change in the future. So I just wanted to kind of put that in everybody's mind, that as we look at the, the business of education going forward, facilities is gonna have to adapt and be flexible too. So we're excited about new ways of thinking, new ways of doing business, and appreciate that we're part of, part of the team. So wanted to get some feedback from the board, like is this too much, too little? How, how do we, oh my gosh, too much, I'm sorry.
Plenty of time.
Nice, jumping here, so thank you so much, too. I, I like, you were the first one to jump in there, I just, again, a testimony to your leadership and say, hey, I'll go first, let's see what this looks like. Some would call it sacrificial land, but I think you actually thrived and did exceptionally well. So I think that, you know, I love that you started your presentation with your why on this, and it's very, very important. If we're gonna attract families to our schools, we have to have a school that looks attractive to our families. So inside and outside, facilities being a huge part of it. You said a few things that I think the board needs to just keep on the forefront of their brain, the average age of our facilities is 25 to 55 years old, that means they are going to need some serious updating. Some of our schools are significantly older than that. I think what you did here was honestly wonderful, it was perfectly executed. So as far as I'm concerned, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is everything I was looking for from, from a department, and I appreciate the transparency and honesty with all this. Preventative maintenance is something I would like to see some money thrown there, to think that that is something that we need to start being.
Yeah, it didn't mean to imply we weren't doing it, it's just not budgeted in that project.
Yeah. Yeah, and then you're the finance team too, because I know this is a huge undertaking for you guys as well, but I think it's a good, good practice for every department to look at, so.
Yeah, Cindy's team did a really good job, like they, initially were all kind of like, really.
It's okay.
The truth is, we found some spots where we needed to make some adjustments.
Yeah.
You know, on a big scale, every few hundred bucks matters.
Yeah.
They did a really good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Trump?
Yeah, you set the bar high for the, the rest of the volume of the presentation, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a good thing, but I'm sure it'll do fine. Again, the average age is scary. Or a business owner, or a homeowner, it's amazing, a lot of the work that's gonna take to, but I'll keep that, so preventative maintenance is, is a must. So I appreciate everything that you're doing. If you ever think of another profession, juggling might, might work, because it seems like you're professional at this. So again, just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue, this was great. And you know, you put the little Yanni seal thing, it was a drawing card, and to me, I love organizational charts.
I know.
You know, it's, when people, you know, you always, I, I get tired of hearing, oh, the cubicle farm up here at ESF, I've got too much people. People don't know what the people in this building do. And I know some of these people aren't necessarily how, they don't stay in this building very long, they may come here compared to their truck and then go out and yawn at all the things they do, but, you know, the community needs to know, what are the responsibilities of these people? They're crucial to keeping, keeping the lights on and keeping their conditioning running and keeping the, you know, fires from starting and fixing it when they happen, so I think that's really important. I, as far, I had a, I had a question, just, you know, because this is, and I want to say, I think the other presentations after yours maybe can be a little bit shorter, just because you kind of gave us the nuts and bolts, and we won't necessarily need all the nuts and bolts every time now, because we can understand the, all this. And thank you for laying out that project, that all the codes.
Yeah.
I think it's been presented before, but that's information that I let go right out of my brain when it comes in, it's, you know, it's not something we look at every day. But my question was, you know, we, we've talked about the zero-based budgeting, so you, you talked a little bit about the conversations you're having just about everything, but what, how does that, how is that changing? I was gonna say past tense, but you're still the, your department's still in the process of this. How is that changing your process compared to previous years? What is it, how is it looking different this year as compared to previous years?
So, that's an interesting question. So I think, you know, previous years, we have started with, well, here's the budget of this year, and you have a parameter, sometimes it's cut something percent, or sometimes it's cut this much. So our previous budgeting cycles have always been about, we start here and go this way or that way. And I think this year, we started with, let's look at our trends and see where we need to be. And I talked to my team about, don't be shy if you need more. Like this isn't, this is, this is the advantage of zero-based budgeting, that you can talk about, I don't need it over here, I need it over there. And it's not necessarily a zero-sum game, it's, we need more resources for something that's valuable, we should say so. This is the environment to, to make that happen. So I think, I think it's, it's almost like resetting your mindset a little bit. Your mindset has been, you know, conserve, 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 and how do you do something with nothing kind of mindset. When in reality, the question should be, how do we best serve our students? How do we best serve our district? How do we best serve our community? And reframe the budget that way. Now, it's not radically different, because we've been operating that way anyway. And in facilities, we kind of look at how we, how we really need to spend our, our big pots of money. We haven't really done a deep dive into the, how much is our phone cost, and how much does, how much travel, and that kind of, that's kind of like normal stuff. So we've really looked at that more closely. Russell's work on the phone side of things, like our phone bill's even cut in half. And, you know, like, it's maybe $300 in one budget, but if you take that and multiply it across the district, it can be huge, it's a big difference. So, I'm sorry, a long answer to your question, but I think it's more, you know, needs-based budgeting, what do you need to be doing?
Right. Of course, the danger of doing it like that is you, you guys could come back with a budget that's, that's, we didn't really have this much. And because I was thinking about, in another department, thinking about, like the all-county conference, we talked about the rent, and the King Center's going to Astronomical, but it's not like we're gonna not do all-county, but if we budget, we say, we're gonna cut everything 10%, well then, we don't have enough money to fund that, we have to pull it from somewhere else. We need to start with, okay, if this is worthwhile, we're going to do it. How much is it going to cost us, as far as we know, unless they raise, they raise again? You know, I mean, this, this is, we know we need this much in this item, I think, you know. It's kind of scary though, because, you know, those things that we absolutely crucially have to have, and then there's the unknowns, the chillers and all those kinds of things, but then that means things that we've been doing for a long time may have to go away, which may also be crucial. I don't enter you guys' decision-making process, but I appreciate it very much.
Ms. Jen.
Thank you, I appreciate you. And thank you to everybody who's here and who's part of your team, and those who couldn't physically be here, because they're out doing all the other important work that we do.
Is that, okay. So I really appreciate it, Ms. Anne. You deal with a department that, there are so many variables that, like you had said before, you're putting out fires everywhere, right? So like, to be able to say that this year, you can be able to budget money to put together for in case we have a hurricane, in case there's a fire, in case all these things, it's, it's very difficult to try to keep an eye on all the moving parts. Many of the other departments have, this is where our salaries are, this is what we have, the consultants and our needs, and you know what I mean? But yours is like, moving all over the place, so I really appreciate you taking it in first. One of the things I was noticing, and you had been discussing it, is the non-filled positions. And when, like, we've had this across the board, so every one of the presentations is gonna deal with it. We go in, we engage with applications, and we go to meet with them, and either they don't rise to the level that we need, or something happens, like they come to the meeting, and like what we were dealing with, with Mr. Chinam, is that we didn't have a lot of work, right? But like, we didn't know that, that Russ was working on as a board, that we needed to move towards that as an initiative? And it seems like when we have those situations where, and I'm not saying this is for you, I'm just saying in general, broadly, that any event that we're interviewing people, whether that's instructors, whether that's people inside of facilities and maintenance, whether that's inside IT, that there's a need that we're missing sometimes? And, and if it's salary, that's one thing, if it's that they want a lot of work, that's another, if it's working conditions, whatever that is. But I think that you all know what that is, but like, it would help us under the retention and recruitment, and there was some sort of a thing that came back to us. So what I was thinking in my mind was, every time there's like a, you, you, they go into it, you guys or your facilities or somebody else could have like an exit interview back, like we didn't able, we, we did not fill this position this year or this six months because of X, right? And then that gets sent to retention and recruitment, and retention and recruitment can compile those and try to figure out a piece, because I think we all know what it is, but there's no like fidelity of, does that make sense to you?
And I, I'm hopeful you will see some budget proposals to start to address some of, some of the big rocks in that arena.
Okay.
Like salary compression is one of them.
Yeah, because it's like, for me, we hear, like, a lot of times we hear, well, it's a salary, but that's just like, my kind of thing, right? But if there's other things that are to it, then we might be able to help it, and I think that's.
Like white fleets, another example, like the investment in white fleet, makes, makes a big difference in my department.
Can you explain that?
Well, yeah. If you're driving a truck or a car, where the air conditioning works occasionally, and it's a, you've had to breeze outside, and you step on the brakes, and you're not entirely sure that you're gonna stop, or the guy in front of you is, you know, that makes a difference. Like, we need to value our employees to the extent that we give them the resources they need to do their jobs. And so I think like that investment has been huge. So some of the things, even on the capital side, like investment in equipment, you know, if you're trying to mow at your mower brakes all the time, we're not very effective in mowing. So, you know, yes, there's salary pieces, but I think there's, there's other pieces too that are related. And we, you know, we communicate with HR and finance all the time, as those are our counterparts, about things that we see in our realm that are inhibiting retention.
And I think, I think there's no doubt that there's conversations going on back and forth between the departments. The issue that we have sometimes is that by the time we make adjustments and changes, it's a longer span of time. So if we had a process that would shorten that up, that's all. And then I was looking through the line items, and Ms. Campbell, I would, I would disagree with not continuing to go to detail, I would actually ask for more detail, I'll get to that in a second. But I looked at it, it said land-based long distance. Russ, do we still have long-distance phones inside the building?
So we have red phones, should be hardwired phones, they're different from our day-to-day phones. They're more expensive because they're, they're just less and less common.
Yes.
But we still have, and we've got, so we have fax lines, there's still some places that only want fax.
Is it sent a long-distance fax to the companies who have figured out a digital transfer currently?
Yeah, but there's, there's office services for that.
Right, but, but. And it's such a minuscule amount, just so everybody understands, it's like 90 bucks, it's not like it's a big deal. But I saw that, and I was like, what in the world are we still using that? So I needed to have that clarified. And then when you have vacant positions for salaries, and they don't get used, you had mentioned this Whipple or somebody, where does that go? Like, how does that, so we didn't fill these 10 positions, where does that go? Does that go to your department for reallocation, or does it go to a general fund?
So it kind of depends. At least in my budget, you've got people funded with capital, people funded with operating, so if it's general fund, it, it doesn't go to me, it sits in that salary line item. And for example, this year, I was like, hey, we've had all these vacant mowing positions, could we take a commensurate amount? could we take a commensurate amount, move it over to the operating side so we could pay for contracted mowing services?
Perfect.
Talked to Cindy, talked to the board, like, we all said yes, and that's gonna happen. But I think in general, that money is used as lapse and covers unanticipated expenses on the general fund side. On the capital side, that capital money is either used for other capital expenditures or it ends up rolling over, so it doesn't go anywhere. It stays in the capital.
It stays inside yours, but if it's capital, it will get, and those are the things that go to the other piece.
More stuff.
Okay. And then I love your idea of a senior budget analyst, love that. I just feel like that, that really, because you understand your budget and you understand where you can go. And I can't, the people that are behind you right now are salt of the earth. They, they work every day so hard and they don't have time to sort of put that together and that, you know, it would be better to have somebody help it. So thank you so much for mentioning that. And then, one of the things I wanted to say is, I always love the fact that we've met with Space Coast Area Transit and talked about that, and we've collaborated, we talked about that last night. The thing I wanted to say is, is that the other thing that we've always said we could do is we could work on consortium and joint, joint projects together, and we really haven't done. So for instance, with healthcare, there's some opportunities there. With custodial services, when we order like the paper and everything else, there's some, some things there, some positives there. And sometimes you get to a break point where war isn't getting to issue a better deal, but there are some opportunities there that we could collaborate on. And just so everybody understands, consortiums were formed in like 1969 in the state legislature, and you can grab any municipalities together and you can go to bid on stuff. So like, one of the positives that we can do is create them so that we can sort of lower the cost for us, but there's also opportunities that if like Indian River, you know, City Indian River or whatever, or Indian, whatever you want to call it, one of these other cities, they pay an exorbitant amount of money, but they're not paying it that whole break. They could join our contract, I think you'd be solid with that. That would be part of our conversation I'd be going around. I guess, I had a couple of other notes here, but those are just gonna be for the next one. So thank you so much, Ms. Sue. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. And just in closing, I
Close call.
I was down at Lockbar with, or not Lockbar, I'm sorry, down with Turner Lewis Campbell last week. And this was on the wall of the cafeteria, and I just had to take a picture of it because I love it. It's a clee pineapple, stand tall, wear it round, and you swing on the inside. So, anyway, Russ, I think you're up.
Thank you, Ms. Sue.
Anybody need a hard copy of this briefing?
Yep.
Yeah, so I signed up for the VAP, too.
Oh, Russ, I don't know if that was smart.
Well, you know, wouldn't be the first time. So the good news is, my budget's a little, is complicated for me, but it's not quite as complicated as other departments. So I wanted to walk you through government and community-related things. So we are a staff of twenty, and we're currently fully staffed, which is exciting for me. Because when we lose one or two people percentage-wise, we give a big drop because we're so small. And so in GCR, we have three different departments. We have communications, customer care, and print shop. The communications, there are eight people there. Our administrative assistant, who also has a budgeting background, which as I talk later will prove valuable. We have, obviously, I'm a part of this as well, a second new commander who oversees projects. We have a graphics artist who works not just for us, but for every, any school, any department across the district. We have Mike, who is here, yes, back there, who does all the video production for these meetings, but also moves out to schools and sites to get video as well. We have our pie coordinator, partners in education, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, who partners with businesses in our schools and also is able to bring in some intel through advertising. We have our community liaison, who works with Legacy Club, which is for retirees that get free or reduced admission to school events. Roughly seven thousand, eight thousand members across the district. We keep them engaged with what's going on in our schools. Also works with our faith-based groups. Goal when I got here, and it was almost already accomplished, was to have one faith-based group attached to each, each one of our school sites, and we do have that currently. She also leads our parent leadership team meetings, which are monthly during the school year, held here, yes, often also recorded. And she also works with the, the parent survey, which we talked about lots of times. So that's the eight of us. Customer care, total of five people. If you came in the building today, if you were one of the main, the main entrance, you would have seen them. We have two people there that answer phones, greet guests, traffic cop, you know, people through the building. Obviously, security's a big issue, so they, let everybody make sure that they are, are properly going within the D B. We also have a supervisor, Linda, who sees them and also helps out up front. These people are important because a lot of times, families will come here with an issue. And so how they're treated can be a make or break moment, that they maybe didn't want to talk to the school or whatever. So they are invaluable and their knowledge is second to none across the district. We also have two other people in that department. We have one who does public records requests. Everything that will come to us goes through her, and then she will find the appropriate person and division to get the information from, and then will then get that, close off that public records to the requester. And the fifth member does student records, a lot of scanning as we digitize all the paper files of all of our students, and also works with people who want their, who've graduated, who want their, their, their records and their documents. And so that's the five people on customer care. Print shop is seven people, have a supervisor and then six others, and it's a print shop, obviously, right here on campus. Hopefully, you've all been there. They print everything for GCR, for the district, for schools, for clubs, you name it. They also take business from outside as well. So anybody who wants to consult with them, they can do it. You name it, they do it. The new signs that you see in the boardroom, they printed those for us at facilities home. So that's us, a twenty-member team. So some of the services we provide in communications, not a surprise, but media relations, PR, internal communications to staff, people that have to wait on things that are happening, whether it's village messaging, Dr. Rendell being appointed as new superintendent, anything like that that goes out to the masses. Special events, crisis communication, security and safety communication, graphic support across the district. We do government affairs as well in town, Haci and locally. Partners in education, and as I mentioned, Legacy Club and faith groups. Service, customer care, full range of public records, student record management. Also, we assist the superintendent historically when responding to community feedback when it comes to his office or her office. Obviously, welcome guests and provide information to the public. We also do customer service training, which is something that's part of our strategic plan. Next month, as the vice secretaries training, we're gonna do a customer service segment for them as well. So that's something that we do as a team. And that's, those are the five, powerful five. Print shops, examples of things that they print. Right now, they're getting into their busy season with student planners. That's an example of a lot of student planners. Graduation programs, they're almost done with those. New signs for the, for the boardroom. Just about anything you want to print. So this is my bucket compared to what Sue just showed. This is kind of the two areas that I have. One is ninety-one, twenty-two government community relations, one is ninety-one, twenty-three printing services, and that's the two divisions there. So you see our salaries for each, each area is eighty-seven percent in GCR is for salaries and our expenses make up the remainder. Printing services is, you know, fifty-five percent, but there is, they see this line chargeback. They have a chargeback on their budget of $550,000. So when they do, if I ask them to print something, they're gonna charge me, because they are going to make, you know, to break even. And so a school wants something, they will charge them as well. Example is the planners. Schools don't necessarily have to use our printing services. They could find their own print shop if they would like. But they do, the advertising that we sell and put in there pays for those so that the cost is smaller for the schools. So the chargeback on that, so you see the total numbers of the budget over here. Partners in education, one of the things that makes us unique is that we are able to actually generate revenue of resources. And one way we do that, not the only way, one way we do that is through our partners in education. Each school has a pie leader who works with Yvette Cruz, our new pie coordinator, to engage with their community businesses, families, groups that want to help and be part of it, of the education process. That can be, you know, funds, you know, money, maybe in-kind donations. That also includes volunteering at our schools, if you give a rate for that. And that, that all stays with the school. So the school gets it, the school gets it, it's all theirs. And we have wonderful partners. We have a list of hundreds of business partners. We try to celebrate them as much as possible. Our goal is, is combined about a million dollars per quarter when it comes to funds and in-kind donations. Example, Orion One Eighty wanted to spend a lot of money, and so they wanted us to do STEM labs at Kennedy. So that money was earmarked for that, and we were able to help the school. That was last year. Also, revenue generated is the advertising here at the bottom. So some of the things, some of the products that we do is, you know, banners at schools, you've all seen those. Headlines, we do a BPS weekly headlines, which is emailed out to seventy thousand people on our email list. We also post it online and on our Facebook page. Stadium sponsorships is a thing that we're working on. Student planners, which I mentioned, website ads, and there's more. So this money comes into the district, it's connected to the school, the school gets half of it, and then the district keeps the rest to reinvest. So again, partners in education, resources stay at the school. The district office breaks even. We do pay for the pie fair, which is in August, where everybody comes together, businesses are usually at the Melver Auditorium. All the pie coordinators from each school go, and they're able to kind of make those relationships and try to find new ways to, to kind of work with businesses who want to, to invest in our schools. And we also have pie awards, which is in May. We set it May fourth, and that's what's held here. That's where we, you know, celebrate our pie partners and give out awards. We have, we have music with Hoover Middle School, and it's a celebration to end the year. Those are paid for by sponsorships, but we don't make money on that. That's just quick, thank you. And again, some of the district usage that we use for the funds and advertising to stay with us? You know, we do some supply different departments with money that they can use throughout the year. Maybe training, that's all about food, training, that kind of thing, so they have their own accounts that come through us. You know, district morale, we use money for that, school morale support, you know, appreciation months for teachers, principal KPs, special projects. The school board was upgraded recently and we paid for that, it is money. So what's next for us as GCR? You know, coming soon, obviously, we're gonna work with Dr. Rendell on his introduction officially to the community as superintendent. Middle school videos are coming in. I've seen five of the, the first set, and we're excited about showcasing our middle schools and the awesome things that are going on there. Obviously, you know about summer enrichment programs, like last year, we got a slot line of those. We were at Coco for one of them where they were launching rockets with students. School improvement over the summer, as Ms. Han mentioned, maybe a lot of work and a lot of visual, and so we'll be working with that as well, we'll spend our time doing that. Each school has their own bio, as you're aware, and so we'll spend the summer updating those. We've had a lot of change with the principal, so that's gonna be one of the main focuses, and then make sure that anything else that they're offering academically or curriculums will be up focused as well. We're also gonna launch a product called EPS alumni profiles, where we're gonna look, work with schools to see who's a nice, you know, you know, example of what EPS education does for somebody, and try to get those people to tell their story of coming through our education system. And things are in the works. This is as we get closer to August and September. Obviously, if you want the school choice, how are we gonna manage that message to make, make sure people know that we have great options here as they look for the best place to have their child educated? Reactium, we're all familiar with that, is transportation school buses, the family app where they're gonna be able to track their child, they're being rolled out, and so we're working on, we're working on a plan for that. Summer trains, we even talked about the secretaries that are gonna be here as well. We're also gonna work with schools when it comes to how they communicate with their families, give them the best advice. Parent engagement plan, done a couple of things over the last couple of years, gonna try to imagine that. As we get ready for the new school year, always, always concerned about employee morale, make sure they feel loved. And then, hard to believe, but the 2024 legislative session planning with our agenda is gonna come up pretty quickly. That's gonna be in end of August, first part of September, where we'll try to go with the board on that. So that's just kind of some of the things that are, that's busy between now and August, September. Let's see, look at that. So that's me. Obviously, you have the, you have the attachments of the full line items, and I give questions, comments, critiques, advice. Would love to hear it.
I have a whole question. First, let me just say, Mr. Todd and Ms. Patty at the front, they are an awesome director of first impression, I love them, they're always so welcoming, so if they're listening, shout out to you guys. The parent leadership meetings, how many people would you say are attending this on a regular basis? I think it's gonna be in the
Ninety to a hundred.
Really? Okay, so that many, on a monthly basis? That's every month that happens?
Yes, during the day. Well, it's, it's not, it's nine, eight to nine times a year. So we had our last one in April, so it's really eight, you know, it's kind of during the school year. So we'll do one, next one's in August.
In August, okay.
And the goal is to have, and this is something that's kind of extended to review, but the goal is to have two members of each school beyond a tent at least.
Okay.
So that's, you know, a hundred and sixty-ish, a hundred and seventy. So it's about ninety to a hundred. And the goal is for them to take that message back to their community, and we have different agendas each time.
Okay, would you be able to share that with the board of the upcoming ones that are happening, so that we're aware?
We've scheduled those, yep, yep.
Okay, that'd be awesome. And then, as far as the advertising goes, you had said that half of the money stays with the school and the other half comes back to the district. Is there a particular reason that the school couldn't keep all of the money if they were to go out there and solicit advertisers, maybe even try to, to partner to working with our print shop? Because that seems like that would be a win-win all the way around.
Yep, there's nothing at all that prohibits that. And we actually had that conversation with a leadership team last month, April, March, remember that was? Where there's, there's no obligation they have to work with, with us.
Okay.
At all. And some, some schools don't. And now, with, with that comes extra responsibility, as we discussed, as far as making sure if it's a banner or a sign or whatever it is, that it's actually, it's up kept and it's, it's not damaged. And if it is, you gotta get it repaired. They're responsible for everything like that.
Okay.
And also, you know, the school board has a policy on what's appropriate and what's inappropriate to advertise and what we can and cannot do.
Right.
We can't pay, we can't play, play, uh, excuse me, we can't play favors as well. And we cannot say no to somebody unless it fits a certain criteria.
Right.
And so schools need to be aware of that, and hopefully they are, especially after our leadership team meeting. But if they want to do that, then that's fine. One other, one other thing, we're quick, is, is we did set a, we do have a set rate for certain products, and so we need the schools, and this was communicated with them, to, to respect that as well, so that everybody charges the same, no matter if it's a district or a school, so that every business has the same, the same platform to kind of launch from.
Okay. How does a school decide, like, so, because you said some schools don't partner with us and some do as hard, and I'm assuming you mean that in the way that they wouldn't give us half of the advertising fee and then some schools keep all of it? So how does, how is that established?
No, I didn't mean that.
Okay, all right.
The matter was, the schools can, the schools are very decentralized in our district currently. And so if a school wants to sell a banner, they can do that. They don't have to ask permission. They do have to run it by somebody, according to board policy.
Okay.
Superintendent or the designee, and I've been the designee.
Okay.
To make sure that it is, that it's appropriate, it's on policy.
Okay.
So it's not like they're doing anything wrong, they can do whatever they want, we're here to help.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we're here to, we're here to make sure that, that the people that work, you know, with me and for me are able to get, make the money, and then we have, like I said, we reinvest all the money back into the district in one way or the other.
Okay, so, all right, and just moving forward and looking at, I think it could be good incentive to some of our schools if they were able to maintain majority of the money that they raised with the advertising, and it also helps us with more business partners, and so I just wasn't clear on that part of it, because I know I've heard that in the community, well, we don't want to sell the advertising because we only get to keep all money, so why are we going to work on selling advertising? So that's kind of, I've heard that from a little bit here and there, so I just don't know, moving forward, if that's something that we could look at, and then maintaining that and using that money to reinvest back into their school, I think that would be a very positive thing.
Yeah, that's always been the case, so, and again, they were reminded about that, and so, yeah, we're here to help the schools, right, we want to support them and show them love.
Yeah.
And, but we can't do that if we don't have the revenue.
Yeah.
But if they want to do it themselves, I champion that, because they, but they have to, they have to charge the appropriate price.
Right.
And that's going to, that I asked, I believe.
Okay, and so part of that, like the advertising, does that help fund your budget, Russell?
No, I'm general fund.
Your general fund, okay.
This is stuff, so we did an example, we did a pretty major upgrade to the boardroom last couple of months. That was just south in facilities, it was very helpful with that, the lighting and also the tech stuff behind the scenes, it was just south of 100 House Motors.
Okay.
And we paid for that based on that, so that we reinvested. We also do things like, if we want to celebrate our principals, on Principal's Month, we visit every principal and give them a small gift.
Love that.
That, you know, we have to find money somewhere, and that's down in the general fund, it's from public money, but it's not restricted based on the way it's brought in.
Got you, okay. All right, well, thank you, I appreciate your presentation, Yvette.
So just, if I can follow up on that, so it's not exactly 50 to the school, 50 to us, because the BK12 takes their, we don't get half that right, because their commission fee comes out of that, correct?
BK12, which is a company we have a contract with, that is on the street selling, it mostly sells banners, so we don't, we offer other things other than that. So if BK12 is involved in it, then yes, they get 25%, the district gets 25%, they're not, they're not involved in every sale.
Gotcha, got you, thinking about that one particular thing, you know, but on the other, the other advantage of the schools using, is that, for example, he's going out, that company is going out soliciting, right, so the schools are not having to go find their own partners and then connecting them with him, he's, he's actively working to connect.
Yeah, they bring the clients.
Right.
And if the school wants to, a lot of the schools do this with their athletics, you know, you'll see, you know, signage on the baseball stadium, fencing, or inside a gym or whatever, and we don't do that, and that became kind of a, that's kind of, that is after the school does that, they generally charge a lower price because the eyeballs are fewer than to drive them by. So yeah, it's like, again, if they want to do that work, then that's definitely good to do, because you get all the money. The other part of that is, and I think about you from West Melbourne, is, you know, each, the county and each city has different codes for signage.
Yeah.
And we did have an issue where we had to go before West Melbourne, very, I lived there, loved them, but they had, they had concerns.
Yeah.
And so we dealt with that. I would rather do that than have a principal have to go do that, because I could not, I would support, but I couldn't leave that conversation if it's something that they did that was inaccurate. So we just warn them, make sure you know your codes, and if you know it, you're fine, right?
Yeah.
But you just got to know.
That's part of the, of the municipalities, the only items to talk about there, you know, keys as well, so if you can't, can't do the math, it's an issue that we had about 20 years ago.
But it ended up working fine, because we relocated them to right, it's not on the public road, but it's in the carloads, everybody goes to the, every day.
Yeah, we, we, we want to be good partner driving, we want to be good neighbor, we're part of the community, so we're like, okay, that's feedback, we'll take it, move on, and we're all solid, so, but that's an example.
So when we, so when you look at your, my last one, if, when we look at your budget of your, you know, your six line spreadsheet, so that doesn't include any of the advertising, all that outside, this is just your, what it takes to run the department budget?
Right, right.
Okay.
And I, but I will say that, and, and working with Cindy's team, it was, it was great, because we, in the past, we would, past like two years, almost three years, we would need a new computer, we just buy it from PR company, which is something, which is one of the accounts that keep our revenue, and then we bring it from the outside. So hiring a new graphics artist, you know, she needed a new computer, pretty hefty computer to do the work, so we spent that money to give her the tools to do her job. But working with Cindy's team, she's like, you guys have like an asset, asset refurbishment plan? I'm like, no, what's that? And so we, now we know how old all our computers are. I have a nine-year-old computer that I work on, and I was wondering why it's slow, and now there are five, so now we have a plan, so that we can kind of go to the general fund, and maybe next year, know that we're going to replace two computers versus just doing it kind of as the need arises. And so I actually like that, so I do appreciate finance for, and maybe it seems small to you guys, but in my little world, running around trying to hype up the district, that was kind of the day, I was like, man, we need a plan, so, seems obvious, but we didn't, I don't know how many people have that going on, but, so I'm excited about that, so, but that's how we also use the money, is to make sure that, someone said it's not in the general fund budget, we, you know, absorb whatever's, you know, bubble machines for first day back at school, or whatever we do to celebrate our people, so we try to do that quite often.
So thanks for us for all that information. Under the what's next, they're coming soon, in the works, I see the middle school videos, but I was hoping maybe see, and maybe there is in the works, of videos for hiring and retention of employees of the YPPS series, anything like that in the upcoming?
I'm always looking for that, and we try to spotlight teachers and staff in a variety of different ways, and a lot of that is partnership with recruitment and retention. They have a two-person team that, one is the recruiter, one is the marketing person, so we work with the marketing person to kind of fulfill their needs, so they're kind of the client, and we're kind of the agency that works with them. So the short answer is yes, the, the longer answer is it's kind of a team effort between different divisions to work together. But in the summer, we are trying to find ways to actually engage people outside the region, so that they may want to move here to work, not just people that are already here, so, does that help?
It does, that's an emphasis, obviously, on that.
Ms. Campbell? Ms. Jenkins?
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
So, I had a couple of things, so when we get into the, there's a couple of breakdowns that I was going to ask for, the first one is, is the advertising, and this is follow-up information, so this isn't something that I'm going to ask you to go right now, but one of the things I'd love to do is, when we brought, the idea that we had when we brought up an advertising agency, was that we were going to bring some, a bigger advertising agency on to bring in like our big contracts with our, you know what I mean, with our football fields and everything else, right? And we've had one down in Palm Bay, and there's been some other that they've tried to link up, but the idea was like, okay, we're going to go after advertising on buses, we're going to go after advertising inside the football fields, you know what I mean, on a bigger scale, to where like the health first of the campaign, or others would do that, right? And we have BK12, do we know roughly how much that company has received in that 20% that they've gotten? Is there a rough number, or is that something we should do?
Like their?
How much we've paid that their 20%?
I don't, yeah, I'll, I'll email you, I'll take a note, but I will email you.
Yeah, I don't know, I think it's great, I think it's been a lot of work, what we were trying to do, and then, so if I could get a breakdown of BK12 budget, how much we paid, what he or that company has signed on, so that we know how much they have, and then comparable to what our district has, right? So like your organization, your group, is also going out there and trying to do these advertisements, because what I've heard from the stumping inside the community is that our advertisement and communications, and this is not true, is not going out and getting them, all they're doing is turning everybody towards him, so that he signs people up rather than them doing it too, does that make sense? So, meaning, this is my question, BK12, I think is the name of the company, they're not the only group that's receiving those 50/50 commissions, right? Like our staff is engaging with the community also, through the product business partner program and stuff like that, right?
You know, the business partner, the partners in education, that you're speaking to, that all states at the school, the work that we do, and that's really the focus of Yvette, is partners in education, what she does states at the school, we don't see any of that at the district level. And again, whatever we get at the district levels, it comes to our office, it's not just hanging out, you know? But as far as sales, she focuses mostly on sponsorships. So when we have superintendent summit, or we have, you know, teachers going back to school for pre-planning, a lot of those events cost money, and so our goal is to offset those costs, and write a check so they break even, so that's a lot of what she does is the sponsorships. Now, as far as sales, yes, she can go out and do sales as well, when it comes to, like you said, Palm Bay and the stadium, I know there's a couple other high schools too, at least I know, that are in that process of trying to do something like that, we would be engaged with that, or hopefully, and not P2K, P212.
But if, if a school, like a high school, decided that they wanted to go out and name their own school, find somebody that could do it for a price, they could do that without paying 50/50 in school, correct?
I think that's a decision that needs to be made. I know that the board eventually has to sign off on everything, but I don't necessarily think that I have the power to do that, superintendent would have to decide as well, based on people.
No, just say, so like Rockers decides that they go out and they find Health First to offer full sponsorship of their football field, they would be able to get the full amount, am I correct? There's not like some stipulation that it has to go to 50/50, or it has to go to BK12, or anything like that?
No.
Okay, right. So what I would like is, if we get to the board members, the amount that we spend towards BK12, the projects that that into, that group has brought in, I would also like our advertising budget of how much we brought in, and then what it is that we spent those things for, right? So that component, then with PI, I'd like to see how much we brought in, and then how much, where we spent all of those things, does that make sense? Because we've got two basic buckets, my, my thinking, right?
PI is not something that we have total control over.
Right.
It's, it's the school, we just facilitate, so I can give you the reports, but if the PI coordinator doesn't submit anything.
Right.
We're not going out to eighty-four schools and saying, hey, what'd you do this quarter? But with the information that we have, obviously, I can get to you, get to the board as soon as possible.
Sure, because there seems to be two, two running pieces, which is what was set up as, is that the local school would raise money for themselves, they would get that movement, they would do that, that's 100% back to them, there's some stipulations there, and then any of the money that's revenueed towards the district, like two guys worked PI, which is through the foundation kind of stuff, like they donate directly to the foundation, correct?
The PI does not come through the foundation of the school district.
What's that?
PI does not come to, through the foundation of the school district.
So if I'm, if I am North River Glen, and I'm donating $200,000 to, for STEM events or wherever, I think L3 has a $200,000, that goes through the, the foundation, correct?
Not necessarily, it comes, if it comes through my, if it's through partners in education, it goes, everything goes to the school, maybe a pastor, but I'm not familiar with, with that, all I know is that, you know, when it comes to PI and money and resources, that also includes volunteer hours, stick with the school, anything that this, anything that the school district does, anything that my office does, is to facilitate that and make sure everything is, is signed off correctly, but not resources there.
Let's do this, any money that you have coming into your department, let's get a line item break out of that from those advertisements, and anything that we have going out to BK12, we have something like that, and the projects that those things fund would be great, because I think that's a positive story. The other thing is, is that we talked before, if I'm a local school, and I want to be able to have an advertisement for a lawn service, but your organization did a larger lawn service, a conflict, is there a conflict in there? Because I'm hearing back to, I'm just trying to.
That's up to the business to decide.
So if I'm at Suntree Elementary, and I want to get a lawn service inside there, it's the local guy, I want to go put a banner up, he's going to pay us 100%, but GSR has a contract with a larger lawn service, is the school allowed to do that, or is there a conflict?
I mean, if I'm the first advertiser, I would not like that.
Yeah.
If I'm the second advertiser, I may still be fine with that, but.
There's a law on the books that says that, like, we don't have any callouts, okay, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to reiterate some of the things that I'm hearing out there.
But I think, I think, just for the record, I think if you're going to do that, you know, that's, that's, that's a problem with short-term, you know, vision, you know, you're going to make people angry as a school potentially, if you start doing that type of.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not on getting advertising, I'm just trying, people say a lot of things out there, I'm just trying to sort here, this is where the budget part is. I think part of what we did in the past was, is that I requested line item expenses for each year over the past two years, and when I pulled it, this area didn't have it inside there, because it's kind of this odd font, you know what I mean, so that's the reason I was asking for, and I really appreciate you doing that.
And since you gave me the opening, Mr. Sheen, one of the things that I'm interested in is, you know, this, this is a small business that's either very successful, or it's a medium-sized business, and yet we still run on Excel, and so we've tried to go through procurement to figure out, you know, I have a design on how do we kind of actually automate and track our things with, with financial software, so that's something that you may be hearing about in the near future, I know that there's, the, the school district may have some sort of concerns or questions about using outside software, but, you know, I think, I think it is a little bit unusual to have these types of numbers coming in and out to different accounts, and we're basically glorifying, you know, paper.
No, I agree with you, anytime, and it's a very cumbersome when you're dealing with advertising, because you have different numbers, different stuff coming in, it's very difficult to keep an eye on it and stuff like that, but I think, so there's a lot of stuff that you guys are doing internally that I think that we need to honor, and think that the stuff that you do for, you know what I mean, the teachers and some of the principals and stuff like that, like, we know, we, some of the businesses know that, but I think that those are some of the things we can focus on, and I really appreciate your efforts in that. So I was just going to say that part of what I'm going to request is all of those, is we give them to the board members, I want to say thank you so much for your faith-based initiatives, your parent leaderships, your parent, you know, doing surveys and all that stuff, you got a good, good team moving inside there. I would say that one of the things that we could add to that is, like you, like Mr. Trent was saying, not only the engagement on some of our major issues, right, like the discipline issue, like retention, recruitment issue, like we have those summons coming up with the community, those kind of things, so I really appreciated some of those things inside there too, I thank you on that. And I really appreciate you answering some of those odd questions, it's just that I don't want to call you on the board meeting, this is the perfect time to do that, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it, that's all I have, everybody else okay?
Thank you for your interest, I like the questions, it's not a bad thing, thank you for your interest, I want to give you what you need, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely, and then, just so everybody understands, we've got 15 minutes till our time served, and so I think if you just kind of take a break, use the restroom, stuff like that, and then, if you come back to our time served, get that taken care of, do a little lunch, actually go through our little area here till then.
Yeah.
And then, and then we'll come back and do 3000, does that sound? All right, thank you very much.
Are you going to come? Are you going to come?
Yes, we'll come back at 10:59, because I was told that I have to start before 11:00.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back, everybody, I think the first policy that we have, as I was getting ready, is 3123 on here, we have a 3111, 3111, yeah, designation in a new position, I'm Neola, I'm sure if you guys have had a chance to look it back, I think this is right, opportunity, yeah, it looks like you've got some notes over here, maybe get a chance to get ahead of them.
Sorry, giving a second, I'm closing up, I'm sorry.
So you guys, you guys all have a chance to open up your email, pass an email update?
Yes.
Good? That's that, so.
There were, I didn't remember, as I was going through those, I did remember we were going to the 1000s, there were some policies that, in both places, so there were some places that we don't have in the 3000s, but we did have them.
I even, I referenced them on here, so, yeah. So we don't have a 3111, or a 3112, or, I think there's.
I just don't know if we really need.
3113, like, or we don't have a lot of these policies that, that kind of starve us out, as far as Neola goes, so, I feel like the 111, to me, I don't think we need, I feel like that's, yeah, I don't think we're understanding your language, yeah, yeah.
So we're good, cut that off?
Yeah.
Move to 3112?
I, that is our 1112, that is our, because we had a long conversation about that, you
Do you remember?
Yeah.
I was saying we can cover this somewhere.
Yep, okay, so we don't need this?
No.
All right.
And the three-one-one-three, we have a three-one-two-nine, which is the same thing as, it's pretty similar, it's not the exact same thing, but. So I don't think we need that one either. So they call their.
All right. Everybody okay with that, moving on? Three-one-two-zero.
That's our. See, I told you they're all, they're all the same.
They are titled different in different spots of ours, they're.
All right.
Okay.
So we provide TARS and.
Nineteen.
Yeah, nineteen, but there, there are some updates, because this one, the CACRA, is twenty-twenty-three. And with, since this one has to do with alternative certification and some other things, I think we're probably going to have to adjust this after the session finishes off anyway, don't you think, Paul, because of.
Yeah, I think it was me.
Yeah, it's possible.
Okay.
There is, one of the things I noticed that was funky is letter M. Why do they need to have a telephone line at their residence? Not landline, right?
Look, we're right here.
You have it? I'm like, why do they need that?
On our end?
Yeah, our M.
So it's bad and then there's.
Listed telephones at their front, at their residence, which I guess could be their cell phone, right? I mean, I actually just interpret as kind of looking at the.
Yeah. Are we forcing our administrators to actually have?
Did we have this conversation before?
We did, I don't remember.
Well, because we talked about it.
We did talk about the policies and whatnot.
Russell, do you have district cell phones for all your administrative staff?
Yes. I have a phone. It's, it's, I'm basically lying.
Just the language needs to be different.
It does.
Maybe with the times, yeah.
But if we don't have all the administrators have contact info?
Oh, we have con, we have, like, our smart sheet has personal and district cell for everybody who has, right?
Some just don't have district phones, some she, some don't like to have.
Okay, but we have contact info for.
So we need to update that.
Yeah, I mean, it's listed telephones at their residence, which, that's something that I like.
And then.
That's not in the Neola.
One of the things that we have philosophically talked about is, there's many administrators, there's many administrative positions that require a, that, that require a degree. And one of the issues we look into, many of the people who don't have a degree, when going into a transportation and stuff like that, end up being below the person, can't apply. And then they end up training the person. And what is happening is, is that they kind of group as their, their. No, no, it's like, when you move up in an organization and you get a certain place, it's a feeling, and it's like, I just, I can't even get the job, and now I have all these other things. And there's, we've gone through this group a couple times, where Dr. Miller goes and redoes the staff description to eliminate that. I didn't know if you guys could give direction, if there's a way that we can maybe say something like, if a staff member directly reports to this and has been in that position for five years, can apply, you know what I mean, like?
Years of experience in the move up, is that what you're thinking?
That's it.
Okay.
I, I'll just be honest with you where this comes from, is my father never had a college degree, but he literally was the leader in line for construction, and he could dance around the ass in order to oversee the construction. And it's just what he was, but, but he moved up in, in an industry where you're just who you are.
Right.
He overseed two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of projects, six huge projects all the time, and he would dance all over with your guys, right? So that's the same regard as some of the other people who have the credibility to do it, but they're limited based on the fact that you have these degrees. And it might not be here, there might be a lot of conversation to have with Dr. Miller when it cuts on, but there's, there's a, there's a couple of these that in transportation that are like, there might be an opportunity for some of the people to move up or to start school, because what will happen is, say you're in the subtracting, the position becomes available, and you're like, hey, I would like to apply for it, there's got to be something to give them that opportunity, that's all.
So, I was just guessing, I think, I feel like, I mean, I know we have talked about this holistically in the past.
Yep.
And it might have been more of a conversation of like, as job descriptions come up, we'll pay attention to that, or we're revising them and updating them to make sure that there is not a teenager or experience over education or just a different pathway. I don't know if we've really had that come to us.
So relevant to this policy, because ours, one of the reasons why, why is that ours is different from Neola is we're, this, they're just simply talking about instructional staff and ours is kind of doing all the staff. So are you seeing in ours, because under administrators and maybe, because I, I think, I see some things in there that, like, that this, this part of administrators only apply to, like, principals and not into, like, facilities administrators or other departments, you know, maybe operations administrators, so do we need to clarify that so that?
I just think, I think, I think that there are some needs for in certain areas, and I think there's also an opportunity in facilities, an opportunity in transportation, there's an opportunity in, like, food services, or food services. I think there's also an opportunity in some of the other ones, in director positions, that are out there. I mean, if you're going to apply for being athletic director, there's someone that says they have to be an administrator for, for you to come apart, you know what I mean? So there's just a lot of them out there, and I don't think we're qualified right now to say this is what it is, but I think it would be worth it for us to kind of have a discussion around it, especially if we're going to, if this is going to have some sort of ramifications that we have to bring it back. Maybe there's an opportunity for us to attend upon, because one of the things we run into a problem is many of the people in those three areas, transportation, food services, and facilities, they feel like there's not an upward pathway for them. And there may be, but maybe it's just not defined, right? Does that make sense?
I think that's some of the work that HR was doing with the ladders, right? We have that, and Mr. Sujin, you had asked that question a few months ago, and there was an answer, right? Sent, I'm looking for it, because we have added that caveat on many of our job descriptions that say experience may count for degree on a lot of, and I have it. It was sent a few months ago for you at a, a question, and so I'm looking for it.
Yeah, thank you, so if there's an opportunity to make sure that there's, more than just a couple year there, maybe like we, we'll basically scope and say, okay, all of these can. You know what I mean, Ms. Green? But thank you so much, because I do, we have been kind of circling this wagon for a couple of years, and it's just a good opportunity.
Yeah.
All right, so this, this, what I'm hearing you say is, this is going to be under a lot of conversation from legislation.
Well, legislation should be that changed, so.
Okay, just making sure that, having recorded, for those salaries. The other thing that we can touch on this one, just so you guys know, is people who become administrators in some cases are less smart than they do in the near future. So we got to address that.
The, the mills will.
Yep.
Just, that's going to be good.
Just came up.
Yeah.
All right. Three-one-two-zero-point-zero-four is on. Do you have?
Uh, we, we don't have.
Agreed.
They have an athletic.
Yeah, an athletic coach is technically should incorporate, honestly.
We have this commercial approach, it's a lot of this, a lot of this, it's all required.
It's not very long, but this is pretty much state law. The certificate, you have to have the training, you have to have.
Since this is a law, do you have any Neola templates to put in?
I do, I'm looking at it, this is exactly what we do, it's all employment paperwork for the community coaches. It's a requirement by we, they can't be certified without it, so they can't be home cleared to coach without it.
So is, so would this be better for us to put into policy to make sure that we have it here? Or is it defined somewhere else in that?
Well, let me ask you this, for, let's, we are considered instructional personnel, so I have to look, but do this, there's a policy that says our teachers must be certified, and here's how you renew your license, and here's how much it costs to go out. I mean, it, it's the same thing that I'm reading in here, it, it's statute. You can't be a community coach without having a community coach certificate, unless you're a certificated teacher.
So can we send this one to you and say, hey, please review, and, because I think we've worn it, but if it's somewhere else, I think that, you know, that, and I'm speaking out loud, is that where they're paid? Just can't wait for them to.
Yeah. Is that part of how the, the course must be available to your cook for retail price and fifty dollars, is that still relevant? I mean, it's thirteen years later, fourteen years later, is that still relevant?
Which can be.
I mean, assuming that.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but we do offer the course, I checked that when we were discussing something else at one of the board meetings. We still offer it every year, it's both virtual and in-person.
We, just for anybody who's interested in applying.
Working on the certificate, the three-year certificate to be a coach. Like, you have to be, if you're a community coach, you have to be renewed every three years with those policies.
Okay, so the current coaches are also going to take our course?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. So three-one-two, athletic coaches, is good. Next one we have here is three-one-two-two-three.
Every policy you add is another one you have to review.
All right, so this one we have, Neola, four employee substitute short-term contract. There we go. We had spoken before about changing this name substitute to a specific.
Guest teacher.
Guest teacher.
Guest teacher. You guys okay with changing that on all of our policies?
So, I wondered if.
Away. Statute.
Oh.
Yeah, it's in statutes, I don't know.
Yes, they have to call the substitutes all the way through when it, when it comes to their employment and, and the standards that they have to have, they're called a substitute. So as a practice, we can certainly.
We started at our schools, but we don't have to change it, we need to keep the legal term.
Can we put in, can we put in parentheses?
Guest teacher.
Well, if we have to rewrite an entire policy for that, that's going to, that seems like kind of.
That's a, remember how we did, so, Mr. Green, just to clarify, you, we have to pay her word for advertising? Will you go over that real fast, just because I'm like, this is something to be aware of.
The, the legal act, we don't usually put the entirety of the, and there we just notice that we're going to be undertaking rulemaking on policy thirty-one twenty-point-zero-four, so, yeah, you would have to pay for the addition of parental guest teachers. By character, because you pay for space in the paper.
Yeah, so, that's.
The longer, the longer you're at, the more you pay.
Yeah.
How much more are we talking?
I don't, I don't know the rates.
Hey, I don't.
An advertiser, I know Florida today is the most expensive, and we all, if they can do it on the shortest turnaround, everybody else usually needs a weekly.
Yeah, we're not sending this, because this is on.
Yeah, usually these go.
We're sending it to the table, we're still.
And once the county gets theirs up, right, they're going to be a little cheaper than everybody else.
I'm trying to find that update, you know.
They have not, they're still trying to set pricing, and pricing is getting.
And the thing that Jamie said is that it might end up being not as much cheaper as.
No, it's not.
Because they're getting charged.
So just so everybody understands, our school district pays very minimal towards doing those, whereas the other county agencies have, well, we talked about last year, so, let's see. All right, so what I'm hearing you say is, you don't want me to change the title.
We can use the practice of guest teachers, but policy-wise, it's substitutes, so it's in line with statute.
We can ask for us to like, focus, feature, like.
Yeah, at least once a month.
Guest teacher. To start the practice.
Ms. Green, is there some sort of like plan, like, when we roll out next year, new incoming guest teachers, like, do we have like a whole thing with that?
We, we have training, and we're actually talking about starting entering, and hey, we'll train for substitutes at the beginning of.
Guest teacher.
Guest teachers. Guest teachers.
Okay, yes. All right, so one of the things that I was noticing in here, is that I'm, I'm sorry, nobody else, go ahead, we're going to.
Ours seems to be a little more of a bar in specific.
So you guys are okay, didn't look at working? Under B in ours, it talks about a short-term teacher being paid on the teacher's salary schedule and assume the full duties of a regular teacher. And I'm so glad you're here, Ms. Green, because this is kind of a contention between some of the substitutes, that they want to take the full-time or the long-term sort of job, but they only get paid as a sub, can you explain that? I think that.
So, short-term teacher is defined in the contract as anything after twenty-one through ninety-nine days. So if you're a substitute for less than twenty days, you are only guest teacher, you're only eligible for guest teacher pay. But if the teacher is going to be gone longer than that period of time, you can be on a short-term contract, and short-term ESTs, we call them ESTs, and they are covered by the contract, so they get teacher pay.
And it's retro, right? Does it go back to the?
Most people are going to start on a short-term because it, we don't have very many teachers that say, I'm only going to be out fifteen days. They say I'm going to be out six months, three months, so.
So, do you have to have a degree to get that short-term contract and be paid as a teacher?
Yes.
So only degreed individuals can take that position?
Correct, if you don't have your certificate, then you don't qualify for a contract.
Is this capable to ask if that starts on day one, or if it starts on day two?
On day one, if you're a short-term teacher.
Because it's a long-term.
Or it's approved ahead of time, yes.
Now, if it does get approved, the person keeps going out, can you, like, I'm substituting.
Yes, so we, we've had teacher, or, well, teachers, because we're talking about teachers. We've had teachers who will submit for leave thirty days at a time, and then they'll put it out another thirty days, and they'll put it out another thirty days, and eventually that person will get a full contract because they'll be past the ninety-nine days, so it is.
Perfect.
And, yeah, one of the things I noticed in here that I, it probably needs to be updated, it's not absolutely essential, but we have, we have very specifically listed in this policy, the half-day and the full-day. And we did, if you, if you sub on a early release day, you only get six and a quarter. And if you're at an elementary school, and the elementary school gets done at one fifteen, you're getting five, you know, you're getting five whatever, so I think it might be worth, not five, you're getting six and a quarter. But, I don't know, we need to adjust that, because now we've had early release, and this would seem, I don't want it to be able to think, usually we're on our policy, let's just be real, but if they were on our policy thinking, well, I'm owed seven and a half hours because I worked, I worked a whole day. You're not getting seven and a half hours on early release day, so.
And, and we, that's healthy for our people.
With, yeah, I don't think, our policy should, which should match it, because it says on A3 substitute schedule for one-half day, four hours, or for a full day, plus a thirty-minute, big free lunch, and we try to, we do need to.
Yeah.
And it's essential, but it's not in practice what we're doing, because we are going along with the hours that actually work. And if they sign out early, because let's say the teacher has planning early and they leave, then they're getting paid the hours that they're going to work, which is fair, right? But, so, do we need to update that, or are we, wrote it down, okay.
Good. We're okay, so, Ms. Green, you're going to take a look at it?
I didn't see, I mean, I have to say, it's kind of a bar, part of the bars, some of it seems to be, I don't, I don't know that we need to substitute this one. Yours is different with Neola, because honestly, Neola's was made in two thousand thirteen, so. And ours is twenty-fourteen, so they're probably, tend to be now that need to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Green, you feel like you got direction?
I do.
Okay. All right, next one is three-one-two-zero-point-zero-five, it all does education certification, it's pretty much the exact same. I don't see any differences here, if you guys are okay, I'll just say it's updated a little bit.
Yeah, I agree.
Great. Mr. Trump?
Yeah.
All right. Next one up is, in the, it's point zero-six, selecting student interns?
I have a lot of this one.
Okay, well, there's a lot of updates, so, Ms. Jenkins, you take it?
I was just kidding at first, because it's one sentence.
Oh, you're joking, then you look at Neola's update?
I'm joking, yeah, I'm not there yet.
Neola's in ours, it's one sentence, and Neola's was activated in two thousand nine, and it has several, several options to pick.
That's what I was joking, that it's completely one sentence to okay, because make sure we don't have this one else.
Are there any questions on it?
There's options.
Yeah, we do not have another policy that has anything about teachers.
So like, I, I read this, and they're talking about like years of experience for people who have it, you know what I mean? I don't think we want to limit individuals with twelve years of experience or anything like that.
You talk about teachers I can get placed with?
Yeah, a supervising staff member may have no less than so many years of successful experience in the area, so it just is like.
We might not want a first-year teacher getting a student intern.
I don't.
That's fine, that's probably why it's in there, though, is they, some districts are like, hey, we don't want to stress out our brand-new teachers by giving them a student teacher to try and educate on how to be a teacher as well.
And so they're in their own mental program as well.
Well, and a, and a lot of times, when we had an influx of them coming in all the time, teachers really wanted them, so it was like a hot ticket to have, and so it wasn't, it wouldn't be fair to give it to a student teacher.
I, I was like, slave.
We don't have that anymore.
Yeah, like, the first year I was on the board, we had one secondary intern in the whole entire district.
He's not too, I think I've got a teacher now.
I mean, there have been more since then, but that year, I just, that stuck in my brain, had one secondary intern.
So, if you guys are okay, so here's what I, I understand that there's a lot of like additions and all these other things. I think leaving it wide open is good for us, but, Ms. Green, do you want to lay in, do you want more specifics here? Do you want more specifics here or anything?
We'll work, we'll bring back what we can bring back, and then from that, you'll have the opportunity to discuss advice and that.
Oh, so you want to take this one and look at it? Okay.
Okay, we're saying we can leave it like it is.
We can just leave it.
Without a lot of verbiage.
Oh, a lot of good fact. Right there.
Better law.
I think so, too.
I agree.
Just to interject, almost all the universities require some kind of CET certification or something. If they have their own requirements, people don't even flex an internal list. So, we've had internals over here at Brooklyn Beach and UCF or someone else, and they're going to want someone who's CET certified, who's budgetary trained certified. So, that's someone who's already got years of experience and is licensed to be a mentor teacher. So, leaving it just the way it is would be the way to go.
Okay.
That's viable.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Mendel. Point zero-six. Next up is, yeah, point zero-eight. Oh, we did casual.
What is that? What's a casual resource personnel?
We don't know what a.
Probably should be resource personnel.
Well, I'll give you some examples. As I'm reading this, I will give you some examples. We have had teachers that are on leave for personal reasons that will come back and do some tutoring out of our ASP funds or our PSR funds. So, that, as I'm reading that, that may be what it might be referring to. So, they're not, they are, they're on leave from us because they had a personal reason to be on leave. But schools, you heard this morning, we were talking about tutoring, schools are dying for tutors. And to put people one-on-one in front of students and teachers are tapped out right now, and so you can't always find them in the building. So, we have a lot of our people on leave that are coming back specifically doing before and after-school tutoring to support the students in the schools, and that's how I read this policy.
So, that's, so they're not violating the terms of their correctness? Because there's certain things they came back to do, they would be violating, right?
Yeah, and they can do it if they're on medical leave or work or leave like that, but if they're on. They can do something. That's how I'm reading that to me. We don't have it, but that's what I'm reading.
So, are you saying this is something we should add?
I'm saying we do, we're doing it because there's nothing prohibiting us from doing it, but if you want to codify it, we could add it.
I'd like to add it, just like Jane said, casual is possible. Might be something.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to add another policy.
Okay. I'm in favor of that. One-two-zero-point-zero.
We're not having it.
Part-time extracurricular.
It says it was updated, but I don't see where. It's just some of the words are different, like, instead of V, it says such.
It was just copyrighted again in two thousand sixteen. It was last updated in two thousand fourteen.
It's just a couple of the words, like, non-important words.
I don't know.
Okay.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
They're not important?
No.
The words?
I think it's.
I think they're important.
They're important. I think this is just, it's hilarious that it says in here, state policy, it even says in here, state policy, three-one-two-zero-point-o-three, but we don't currently have that policy, so.
Ours says that.
Ours says that, but we don't have that policy, so it goes back to, we need to have that policy if we're going to reference it in another policy.
That could be a technical point, huh?
It's athletic coaching.
Yes, the athletic coaching.
So, it would be a technical change for us just to.
Except Carol's going to review that one, so, which if we add it, we'll need it in there, so we kind of got to wait and see if we.
There you go.
Okay, so I guess they know if we add in that three-one-two-zero-point-o-three.
If not, we have to leave.
If not, we need to take that out of our policy.
When you say technical change, remind me, you don't have to advertise it over your calendar.
We don't have to advertise it, it goes on.
Turn to.
All right. Here we go. Next up, part-time extracurricular.
Yes. So, our next, next deal will be on effective job sharing.
Right. We have this conversation.
Yes.
We did, and we've added it to all of our job descriptions, I'm sorry, our job advertisements on Beacon, that we will entertain job shares. We have contract language about job shares, so we do do it. We have done it for years and years. We're probably.
So, it looks like a policy that's important.
Yeah. I think we're going to try to, yeah, I think we need a policy.
And maybe it would highlight it for the community because we're going to have that conversation.
We're also going to give one of those extra bullets on this thing. This is a, this is a good one for us.
Yeah, job sharing is mostly.
Especially when we have one of these.
Yeah, I mean, I think there is even a policy about adjunct, which is kind of what that would be exactly, but I think we can have a larger conversation about adjunct positions for people just coming in. And do we do that with some of our CTE? That also could be a casual employee. Maybe that's what it's referring to because we do have some adjunct staff.
All right, so we're good on adding the job sharing, correct? And Ms. Green will take a look at it before it comes back to us.
We already updated the next one.
No, we just updated the reference references.
Is everything okay?
Any preference or interest?
Absolutely. And we just last year updated the next one, the conditions for employment and reemployment.
So, where is the reference? It's somewhere else in the policy.
We have a, sorry.
Because we did do.
It's thirty-one, yeah.
It's the same policy number or?
Yes.
These were, these were prepared for us before we updated that policy.
We approved it in March.
Why are you asking?
Okay, as long as it's in there. Paul, you don't check to make sure we're still got.
It's on, it's on the.
It's on the website.
All right, we're good then.
It's thirty-one-twenty-one. That's revised in February.
I can't remember what we changed. Oh, it had been updated since two thousand two before that, so.
I don't think we had added it all. I mean, we added it.
Thirty, no, thirty-one-twenty-one.
We're talking about three-one-two.
We are, yeah. We ended up on two different conversations. The veterans left now.
So, we're just going to make sure it's inside.
It is. I'm on the website.
Perfect. So, the next one is thirty-one-twenty-one.
Oh, I know what we did. We, we were talking about references.
References.
And we had, we had, because the, the oldest thing has a minimum of three references, and that was a huge rublog for some of our people who, I was, my situation where I hadn't taught in sixteen years because I was driving my kids, to go back and get the references from the people who were my principals.
Right.
In nineteen ninety-seven, you know, it was causing problems. So, now we have, we just took that part out, right? They have to make calls, but it's not three, part of the three.
That says a minimum of three. On our policy, it is not.
On our policy, it is.
Okay.
That was a change we made last year when we finished the things moving along faster.
All right. Three-one-two-one.
That's what I forgot.
So, one of the things that kept coming up is, is that we had a situation where that guy talked about, there was a person in the, that was told to go get a test.
Yeah, I hate all of that, our first thing, I think.
About a couple of them. This is kind of an area because it talks about background screening, other kids, time schedule established for some of the main causes. So, like, the way it sits right now, it's okay, but it would be an administrative change. You see what I mean? Like, it says may in here, so if this is okay, it seems pretty, pretty connected to all those last things, except for references. And then, I think that after that, we should work on this administrative procedure because I think that's kind of. Ms. Green, can you tell me why we would have, like, can't go back for a full year even though they did tests?
There was a.
The thing about the violation of the director of workplace policy is, is it's not an eligibility for hours and an eligibility for a one-year period of time, which I can't tell you where the one-year came in. I got to look at statute and see if it was in their statute.
I don't think it's.
Yeah, I don't know where the one-year comes in, but the twenty-four-hour thing is because when you contract with your MROs and you look at the research on, on testing, there are things people can do in a period of time.
Sure.
When they're notified that they have to, you know, go test, that will alter a specimen. And then, so that's why there's a twenty-four-hour notice. And when we have people that come in and do drug testing for pre-employment, they sign an initial and it's on all the paperwork, and we give them a copy of the, all of the clinics that they can go to and what their hours are, and we tell them, once you're there, you can't leave. Like, we go over point by point, we make them a history all the way down, so they know it's a twenty-four-hour rule, and that's all about the specimen.
And I just saw the leadership team packet, like, you guys only give those money through Thursday, too, so that there's no situation for somebody picking up on Friday and the place is closed on Saturday, so you can only get it Monday through Thursday.
We got an email, we did get an email, though. I think the entire board got this one about somebody who was sent somewhere and they went to that place and that place wasn't doing screening that day, and then they ended up having to come back and, I guess, HR, do you remember this?
So, if we have several things, we have some issues with some of the labs out there.
Right.
And we do work with those, and we get certified statements from the people that are working the labs, and we get written statements from the people that are providing the specimens. So, we do look at that process and, and, you know, approve the fact that they didn't get there because of what happened at the lab.
Right.
But a lot of them will tell a story that isn't exactly how the lab tells the story. So, for example, we have what's called a failure to produce. And if you don't work with the lab through that period of time, which is a three-hour period of time, and you're like, yeah, I can't do this, I'm going to leave, they tell you, don't leave because if you leave, you're, it's going to be a refusal to test, not a failure to produce. So, if it's a failure to produce, there's things that we can do to help if they follow the rules for being tested. If they leave, it's a refusal. And so, it all has to do with the directions given at the lab, but we do look at, when something goes amiss, we look at each individual thing and get statements and talk to the MRO and either clear them to do, to go again or not.
Okay. And this is, I mean, this is like industry standard anywhere you go to apply or implement.
Well, I guess that's what I was going to ask. Is that the way it is in the sixty-seven counties? Is it a twenty-four hours here in the latter?
Any of the, any of the major industries you go work at.
And if I was in Marion when I got hired there, they told me, you don't take this form.
Unless you're willing.
Time for unless you can give.
We've all been contacted, and even that.
I didn't get that.
That wasn't, and even person, it wasn't.
It wasn't emphasized. I mean, and that's just customer service, and again, the story may be different. I'm just saying, you know, something to be that important needs to be nice big yellow big poster size, that, you know, we take this packet, and we can say that now, but if this is like, sign here, sign here, go, do a test, you know? And for that full year, it's turned some quality people off. I know they, well-established real estate broker that has no reason to substitute, but had talked to, I didn't tell you, they had talked to Mad Max and we need substitutes or guest teachers. So, they went and did this, and something happened, and it was the, not that day, the next day, he went and literally up over twenty-four hours, and they said, come back in here. And he said, well, you obviously don't need guest teachers that much, so we can't lose people. So, I didn't know if twenty-four hours was, was a standard in education, or is it forty-eight hours? I'm not quite sure of anything you can get out of your system within twenty-four hours. I'm not sure.
He definitely doesn't smoke for the drugs.
No, not at all.
There's no way in heck.
So, I've been, I've been asked, can you just ask about, you know?
Is there a way, is there something, because I remember this now, I remember it is. So, that individual went in and applied, but then didn't come back because of that. Is there, can you?
They send an appeal. All they have to do is send an appeal. For us, I mean, I'm not saying it's going to be.
But it's.
You said, is there something that the professor's going to do? They can send an appeal and we can research the situation. So, again, we go back to the lab, they can follow their notes, we ask them what they, what they instructed the person, and if there was an anomaly and it wasn't done properly, you know, we have given consideration to letting them go again, but they have to start with an appeal. I'm wondering if the gentleman that you're referring to, and I don't know for sure, is one that I just got a long, same, same situation?
He doesn't.
Okay.
There are multiple situations, but I did take another one for off.
I have a friend just got hired on last year to be a clerk, and she was very, was very aware of the timeline, had a similar thing, had to switch, go to another lab, so she was, made very clear to her, and she knew she had the twenty-four hours and had it for everything.
If twenty-four hours is the issue, just think.
Yeah, one or the other, right.
If I'm going to come back a year from it and it happens, you're going to try to find a way to remedy it anyway.
I think that's what's based in statute, though, right? I have, that.
Would you guys entertain a shorter comeback?
If it's, yeah, I mean.
If they say it's not.
See what's there.
You can see them out for three months or six months and see if it happens.
So, Dr. Green, are you, are you going to convert, check statute?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Can you check statute?
You said, well, Claire's.
Because that would be the thing that makes sense to change, not the twenty-four hours.
And just keep in mind, we have that out, that one-year out for a lot of things, not just this policy, but for other people as well, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving on. Three-one-two-one-point-zero.
Yeah, I think it's last year.
We updated. Mandatory reporting. Yeah, we did, we did this one last year.
I was okay when I read all of this. You guys don't have any interjections in there?
I have a question for you, Ms. Green, actually, about this because I've heard this and I would like to know if it's true or not, but in regards to, like, when we're checking employment history for an applicant, is that something that our HR department is doing, or is that something that we're tasking our principals with checking references for?
The hiring manager, whoever the hiring manager is, is to contact, and there's, that's state statute, there's mandatory questions that you have to ask.
Okay.
There are four of them, and if they are required to contact at least the previous employee, employer.
And the hiring manager's responsible?
Yeah, or their secretary or into form. So, they call, they get who they're speaking with, and they just ask the questions and dictate the answers.
Okay.
So a principal can do it, they can assign it to their secretary, they can assign it to their assistant principal, they can assign it to their cafeteria manager if it's a cafeteria worker, as long as someone calls with some authority and gets the reference.
Okay.
Why is that place of employment is no longer in office? What if the place department, because we've had a lot of these, right?
We've had a lot of those. And we work to find anything that we can find on the person. And the statute says you make a good faith effort. So our requirement for that is you call at least three times. Or if they're out of business, that's a different, I mean, like, you can write a statement that they're out of business. But you try and find someone who will give any information about the person.
Okay. But it's not a requirement, if it doesn't fall through, it's not like they can't.
No, no, no. It used, it used to be very difficult. We had people that had worked here for 30-some years that would say, if I wanted a job today, I couldn't get hired.
Yeah.
Because I've only been here for 30 years. So that's, that's what led us to change some of these requirements.
I know that hills were up to complete a streamlined process with, I was talking to HR. So we're okay with what's currently inside here, I am. Are you guys okay with it? Okay, move on. 3122.
So there are additional number and seven and 10 are, or updated, I think. Seven and 10 are updated.
Are you saying section?
Yes.
Seven, section 10, I'm sorry.
And then because we have definitions as two, or they have definitions as two, the changes that are working as well.
You know what? We look at under our compliance officers. We, this is a small change, but we no longer have the assistance difference in equity and innovation choice. So I truly believe we should give this back to staff.
Yeah, because there's, there are. Two of the sections are major update.
Yeah, and there's, this, the Neil update is 2022, Neil, 2022.
So Dr. Green, in regards to 3122, the non-discrimination of people. Take a look at that and then the other one, lie what we need. We start getting into this one tough case. 3122.02, non-discrimination based on genetic information.
841.
What?
Yeah.
001.
I think that this kind of is covered in our policy, but, yeah, we talked about this somewhere else.
Do we have it under our antigravation? My, did you just say discrimination?
Discrimination.
Yeah, there's a definite Neil policy for, this one is just specifically against disability, this discrimination? I don't know why there's a second. Policy, is it a different feature?
There's a 0.01.
I know, I'm looking at that one. 0.01 is specifically about disability discrimination. Is it, I mean, are they that different of a set of rules that we, looks like it's about the same length.
Wait, I'm sorry. I thought we were on 3121.01.
We are, but we don't have that.
No, 3122.
But, yeah, 31, sorry, 22.01. Because we were just on 3122.
Well, this is one that, again.
This one came up in a different section, I thought.
Just take a section out and, God, please. I would not feel comfortable with us actually having this until it comes to a major picture. And put all this up on the screen. So if it's somewhere else, that's great. I would like to sort of review, make sure.
Even talks about facilities, like some ADA compliance issues.
Is there a way you guys feel comfortable with us giving it to Ms. Green to review where it's at other places? Is it a special law?
Yeah, no.
That way she can see if we need it or if it's in other places, let her bring it back. Is that okay? It's just, I mean, there's a lot of here, a lot of.
And part of this might be at risk, so I'm wondering when we get there if it's under operations. But we'll look.
There's a, there's a non-discrimination in the twos as well, we can keep building in there.
I, because I think we talked about it when we went over the twos. I think Niola had it in the twos.
We can look at it, parrot it, and make sure it's all.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're okay now?
Yep, so moving on, 3122.02, genetic information.
We talked about non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunities in the twos.
Yeah, it was, it's like similar.
It might be spread out.
And my, this might cross everyone, let me just.
All right.
Paul, which policy are we on now?
This is identical.
3122.02?
Yeah, they haven't had.
Based on genetic information?
Yeah.
This one, they want to.
Yeah, it looks like the board updated this one, Niola did.
Okay, checked. Good. Everybody? Move on, next one. It's 32, 3124, B1, 31, go to the workplace, B2, go to the floor.
So we have to, this one, two years ago. And I want to say, the change that we did was to incorporate the technical guide. There were two things that we updated here. The technical guide was always incorporated into the policy as part of its policy. But we, we updated the technical guide to include the sentence about the THC products, CBD products, lotions, oils, gummies, anything that is, that is in existence today and may be existence, maybe in existence in the future, will be a violation of our directly workplace policy. We also updated the sentence about if something comes to the superintendent in violation of the direct, record workplace policy, that the superintendent will consistently recommend termination for positive findings of controlled substances or alcohol, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the two things we changed. The superintendent's recommendation in the policy itself and the technical guide to include current types of violations.
This, probably like last five years, we've got three or four of these. I think three or four of these at the board level, a couple of drug, you know that.
We just have one, we have one since I don't.
Is there something we want to change here in the office? Where they want to allow that process. Maybe if there's anything for you to do, go up to and pack up.
I'll note that Niola does require office advice. If you have federal funds directed from Washington, you have to have option one from version two.
You have to have options?
Option one from version two of the policy. If you receive funds direct from Washington.
Federal.
So I mean.
Direct federal fund, you have to have option one. So that, that's, I don't know if we, if we did receive federal funds.
And we attested to everything that we sign up on, like grant application.
Might need to tweak it, the language. We do say we're gonna supply, maintain a drug-free workplace. It's saying the Drug Free Workplace Act, so we probably need to tweak ours because the Drug Free Workplace Act is a federal law.
The statute's on the bottom, but yeah.
Yeah, we're citing it on the bottom, but the language is.
Why? It's, it applies to most schools, because most schools get federal funds. But it's through state, it's federal through state, if you can listen or read.
Right, if you just received federal funds to the state, you might not need it. But if you received your direct federal funding through Washington, you have to have it.
In the causes conflict, I am, I mean, I, you know, we've had these conversations. I'm not interested in changing and lighting our directly workplace policy.
Yeah, I don't know, we have to, we only get whatever here or something like that. We can take a look at it individually, get the process with superintendent to pull the trigger on. And then that way, if this, we're not like, so we'll get it.
And if I remember correctly, Carol, that the process when people are onboarding, not just onboarding, but every year you can hear, right, all employees, all our teachers, they have to go through the whole training, right, and set it somehow, I understand, but I.
It's hard done now in a new employee orientation. If you take any over-the-counter THC, you go to the drugstore and buy gummies or whatever, if you tell the audience the THC, you're gonna be recommended termination.
And just so you know.
Do you make them repeat it?
They do. It's like written on the slide now, you know, where Rosemary reads it direct from the policy.
If you guys remember, we had one of them, and I called all of the dispensaries and, and, and. And they say they have a specific thing that says, if you work for the government, for the federal government, you will be found in violations. Like, they made it, you know, they tell everybody, they get it, that, you know, and they recommend it, we terminate because they're the ones that tell them, they're, they're welcome back. So just so you know, I think you'll ask, can we work with them?
Yeah.
And then if we just take each one, does that sound good? All right, we have 3126 here in the book. And we don't have a Niola update for it, so we can take a look at it, direct contact for communicative diseases.
I just know we don't have a lot of them. We might be.
So it's a bar, we created it.
Oh, it does, huh?
Does anybody have any problem with it? You guys okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to create a lot of creativeness. That's, I guess, one.
Sure. How about issue?
Uh-huh. 2008, might mention G A.
I don't know, but yeah, there's something, there's a situation that happened, or something, like, could it possibly?
Do we need this policy though? I mean, I don't.
You're printing it out, because you're.
What is it?
You're gonna get one?
I think, but the policy is about, oh, we have 8453, which is direct contact communicative diseases, which is also done. So this is, this is a repeat. It's the same.
Exactly the same?
Well, I mean, we're, we're in the staff section of our policies right now. So this is, this almost implies that we're supposed to be training our staff on communicative diseases.
We do it earlier.
So, but specifically, it's a policy.
Yeah.
Well, this, for students and staff, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we need to have it?
You're saying it's in somewhere else.
It's, it's 8453.
It's operation. Yeah. All right, take that one out. 3126, take it out, Paul. It's somewhere else.
It's somewhere else in here, I don't know why we would want to.
You can't take that yet.
We're cutting down.
Well, it's a test to go through.
We still have to pay for, to put it in.
Oh, my gosh.
But the good news is it's not a side form.
We're reducing. All right.
Next.
3128, contracts.
We need to update.
Employee. If you guys are okay with taking what is currently here in respectful liking of Niola and giving it to staff, we can bring it back to Niola and 31, how do we compare it?
Um, are there some things in our contract that are gonna be? We don't have any policy that's in the contract, because every time we change a contract, we have to change the policy.
That's what I said, if we just get this to staff, we adjust it based on what's required.
Carol, anything else? Well, but, so Niola and this one were done at the same time, so.
Uh, Niola had an update in 2017, their contract was 2017.
Yeah, it's been. Way more statutory language.
So if you're okay with doing that?
Yes, sir, but I didn't hear what it was.
Okay. So if Niola company has some additions, if you can take a look at those additions, compare to what we currently have inside our policy, make a recommendation that fits for us.
3122?
Yes.
Thomas, 3128.
3128, yes.
And I know you'll probably never come to a board game or discuss the policy.
Oh.
Is everybody okay with that?
It's why she's here, so we don't get into too much trouble.
3129.
2000 policy is for.
This is all, yeah, this is so baby right here. This one needs to get updated.
But either way, we're calling that review, whether she recommends changes or not, we're gonna call the law from her date, right?
Yep. Yeah, all the time.
Conflict of interest.
There's a couple of additions on the second page. If you look at the Niola update, there's a couple of.
It's a lot longer.
Yeah, a lot of it's statute, we're gonna, they, they incorporate a language out of the public employee.
They also include things about the New World Reading Scholarship. Why did that be in the conflict of interest policy?
So we have a conflict of interest, there are five laws also.
I think that one's more about the board.
Right.
There's something there. I think if we're okay with sending this to Ms. Green, so she can review it and bring it back to us, it's probably appropriate. Especially because it seems to call out.
Oh, here is the conflict of interest part. So basically, it's saying on the second page of Niola, um, that we're not gonna prohibit teachers from offering services outside of their regular work hours for the scholarship, for the New World Reading Scholarship. So they can take money from the New World Reading Scholarship and tutor or whatever, provide the, it's not the, like, $500 reading scholarship that Niola. That's a change question.
Yeah. I'm not that in depth on that.
And she okay right there? So I just noticed he's still here. If you just do a policy discussion. All right, are we good with sending this to Ms. Green?
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Green, you're good with the tech review yet?
Got it.
Are you?
Yes.
Next up is 3129.01, tutor.
I think that we have something about, um, in our facility, I don't know, can you tutor us? You can't pay, you can't tutor them pay.
The school, the school can pay a teacher to tutor. So if you stay at the hours, your school can say, all right, any teachers that wanna get extra pay, the school's gonna pay you to stay late to tutor. This, you can't go through a private entity or tutor outside of your school for money to tutor your own kid. And that applies to coaches and everything else.
Private coaches.
And you cannot pay on the side to tutor or coach.
With this policy.
Says that you can tutor your own kids through the school, through the.
The school can offer a tutoring, like, we're gonna pay all teachers their hourly rate to stay late and tutor students. And they can tutor through that way. That a student, a student in their class cannot come to them and say, my mom wants to pay you $50 an hour to tutor. They can't do that. You cannot tutor anybody that's on any of your classroom.
And so like, like the music teachers, like if you're an orchestra teacher, one orchestra teacher. He can't, you know, you can't teach, like, you teach his cello lessons separately. He can teach students from other schools private lessons, but he can't teach his own teaching private lessons. And he's. So, because that's, because that's.
Colin, it's just like the coaching thing. If, if coaches are paid by the parent to coach the kid in pitching, that kid's gonna be on the roster. And, yeah, so it's like.
How about, how about, how about a math student that's not on any of your rosters?
Yeah, if it's in another, like, if you're, if you're tutoring third graders, but you only teach fifth grade, that's fine. They're not on your roster. Once they get to school after school. Once, well, that's up to.
You can do it at school, after school for pay, if you fill out a facilities use form and pay for the group use of the room, because you're making money.
Board policy, yeah, but.
What if you.
Once they get to fifth grade and they're on your roster, you can't do any.
What if you're coaching JP and you're, you're, you're tutoring a varsity student?
If you're not, if they're not on your thing and you're not coaching them, you're okay. You're gonna be in trouble with the state if you get caught taking money from, I, I tell people, don't make it close. Yeah, it's not really that.
Well, correct me if I'm mistaken, but there's also, like, using facilities, issues regarding insurance and the whole.
Right, that's gonna be the facility use. Facility use agreement, that's gonna be there.
Okay, so we do have some additions that are to your income portion of this. Do you guys feel like we should update this and add this? We want to have it go by staff, or do you want to do? It does, it really does. And I think in tutoring, as long as what everybody heard of it, this piece.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna discuss, it's, because they are, they are, since 2022, they introduced the New World Reading Scholarship, that they, that was just one of their New World Reading Initiative, you know, updates. I don't know.
So I tried to find, I can't find any language that says how everybody paid, but it's funded through the state, so.
Of the New World Reading?
Yes, they receive state funding, so I, I found that somewhere. So I think that's why, I think it was something more specific, because it's probably some conflict in, in statute somewhere, so it was cleaning up that conflict, but I. But I can't see what, where people get paid to do that.
I look for the, the five hundred dollar rating.
Right.
Yeah. And don't we need to be called that?
So are you guys okay with keeping the policy the way it is?
Yeah.
Even if, even if it seems that we've got another, we've got a statute reference to it, it's different.
I don't think we have, I don't think we're having a conflict right now with what we're doing.
Thank you. All right, Paul, can you just check that? Let me make sure it's not a couple of consultants. I'd like to keep the generalized one and, it's not, we don't have to go to this one because it references a different statute. You know what I mean? Perfect. Maybe just updated it. All right, next one, three-one-three-zero. How, how, how long do I have to guess? How long are you gonna let me push you into? Another hour? You guys okay with going to three-thirty? Everybody okay to go to three-thirty?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to Coco and it's sort of four, so pretty simple. The, the Marsus Foundation expansion event is at four, if you guys still have any.
Okay, here we go. Um, appointment, assignment, transfer and promotion of staff.
There's a couple of Neola ones in the chat.
One.
Yeah. There's actually quite a slew.
Okay, tutoring, and then three-one-three-zero.
Yeah.
In the Neola, there's a thirty-one-twenty-two.
We're at thirty-one-twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Oh, I jumped back.
I went back. We're at thirty-one-twenty-nine.
Okay.
Good, Miss Carol?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, it's the one, the rating one.
No, the event. First one, then some of their emails go to the other, and then he goes spam, which he always gets sometimes. I'm like, what are you talking about?
All right. Okay, so there's a bunch of additions here. Promotions and transfers is inside of here, require reporting. We gotta deep dive this thing right now. Because it's by section.
Thirty, three-one-thirty?
Thirty-one-thirty. Right, we have appointment and assignment. Section. And then he goes, society schools in a D-Rat. Teachers teaching out of view, all of those things. You guys wanna go through this? Break it down. Appointment and assignment.
I wonder how much of this is still accurate.
Hours or days?
Um, hours. The, theirs is updated in, I'm not very good on that, twenty-nineteen. Just because like ours starts off with the, um, I mean, it may absolutely still be relevant depending on who you're the person to ask, because I think we've had most to do with that with the D and S schools, or like the whole, the part in ours about the percentage of, like, you can't have a percentage of first-time teachers, tech, tech start teachers, if a school, out-of-bill teachers, if a school's in the year. Some of those have changed leaders. On how you deal with turnaround schools and.
Well, we have an old, uh, yeah, this will be a lot of things. Uh, I think this one, she goes that anyway, because I think it also has to align with contract.
Promotion and transfer, one that you're always getting on.
Since that's our hot button issue as well.
So, Ms. Green, I think the board is asking to send this one to you, thirty-one-thirty to review and see if there's an opportunity for us to update and bring it back. Is that okay? Next up, thirty-one-thirty point zero one. That, I'm sorry. Thirty-one-thirty point zero one, based on the staff. So we have one Neola that's not having an update. Okay.
It just gives the superintendent the ability to, to move staff, so they need to. With the bargaining, so this would be non-bargaining.
Yeah.
This is not the.
Yeah, it just means like, it's like, yes, the policy says you can do it, but if the contract says that you can't do it to a professional service contract teacher, you can only do it to annual contract teacher.
Right, right, right.
You have to buy by the, whatever contract.
Yeah, I'm in the.
Okay. Thank you. Next one, thirty-one-thirty-one, caution in staff. Uh, Neola's a little bit different.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, so there's this, uh.
Double, uh, hours, but. Ours is one. Definitely, there's just something we talk about, the job of personnel bargaining.
So I'm okay with keeping what we have here? You guys okay with that?
I'm okay.
Yeah, I don't know that we're, how long it'll be in the future before we ever need to.
That's all I'm just thinking. All right, thirty-one-thirty-two.
Let's pray for that day.
Oh, wait, we don't have a.
Maybe in the plan, this con like thirty-one-thirty-nine, we don't, we're, we don't have vacancies. Well, we have vacancies, but we don't have a vacancy policy. All right.
Uh, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of veteran stuff.
I think this is a good policy, I mean, honestly.
Okay.
Is there any reason that anybody on the board thinks this would not be a good policy that we should have?
I've accepted it's common sense.
Yeah, I feel like it's not necessary.
Common sense is not so common, Miss Campbell.
But I don't, I don't see any, I personally don't see a value in these words.
Well, I think it's schools are just hurt accountable to actually providing and publishing the, the list of vacancies, right?
I'll see the school board to employ the best qualified first-hand agents in China. I think it's almost, I think it's a powerful statement. I like it. We're good? We're good?
I like it.
Okay, are you guys okay with that question?
So we have a practice, um, of the superintendent being able to, because of the authority granted to cover by statute, being able to select their own employees. And sentence two seems to contradict that. It says, um, all members of the instructional staff shall be eligible for any district vacancy, provided the department's willing. So if, to me, that would say a superintendent would have to advertise all vacancies. And right now, the last several superintendents have not been told to that, which I think is appropriate for statute for what they're allowed to do. So we institute this policy.
We would have delayed our student services hiring.
Same.
We would have been delaying.
Correct, today. Correct. And I can name those, I can name those people from last two superintendents as well.
So, well, for example, today, if I made today, would it have? Was it about out of meetings? So it wasn't out of meeting, we just?
It was not.
Okay. And that's allowed? Yeah. Or in practice, for example, if, you know. Pam, it says district vacancy. Yeah. I mean, when, when, if.
Oh, okay, it is, okay.
If Tammy left today, please don't, if you're listening, Tammy. Um, but, you know, somebody.
Remote learning, she's not like her remote working, she's not like her.
Right, like if somebody, you know, and we knew somebody, because that's a specialized physician, you know, knew somebody, it was a mouth. Yeah, I mean, I think it's only been, I, I think it's only been at a cabinet level. I don't think it's been, um, hourly employees. Right. But, but I'm concerned about that sentence, if we are to institute that policy.
Is there enough, can you weigh in on this one for us, on what they sponsor?
Well, I almost feel like we have enough procedures in place that we're good as we are. You know, for example, we have a lot of contract language regarding it's about how many things can be advertised and transferred and so on. This, we've been surviving without this policy. Seems like we don't have really needed. The more policies you put in place, then the more times you box yourself in.
Yeah. The only reason I, I like this policy, just if I'm being completely honest and transparent, is that it, it does give the ability to advertise it and not, um, sometimes you hear that there's a good old boy system that, that happens here with, with people that, you know, you kind of get brought under their wing and, and then they get promoted, promoted, and it's not available to everyone. And so I've heard that from multiple people within our district. So the only thing that this policy could potentially do is eliminate people from being able to say that, because then it would have just created across the board. But I hear what you're saying on the fact that we've been surviving without it.
Eliminate them being able to say it, but it won't stop with that thing.
I guess you could modify, you could modify it to exempt, like, direct reports to the superintendent and school board.
Well, I think you could, not to give Dr. Green more work, but we could add this one to the review. She and I could, we've done this work to look at and see if there's any word smithering to that one section we'd wanna do, just to.
I think, I think we wanna allow you to have that, right? But I think we also want to give the opportunity for certain positions. And I think we're more concerned about positions than direct reports.
That's what I'm saying. And we can modify Neola to still give him that flexibility and the board that flexibility to hire direct reports without necessarily going out. But then your regular, you know, directors and down, you have to go out and then there should be an equal best qualified candidate.
Right. Well, let's just say.
But so, yeah, I think the worst thing would be good.
All right, I like that.
I mean, technically, we, we can do this, but I mean, you just, you talk about direct reports, but we only have to, you and, and the superintendent, if, on, you know, at any given time, the board has said, if we want this person, this, you know, we, to be the superintendent, we, without going through a process, you know, sometimes districts do that, you know, don't go through a process and name someone who is, check them stuff, you know what I mean?
Let's let them check it looking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I just could have cleared a lot of vacancy, show you now.
But I hear what you're saying. I think this is probably the main area right here, that is maybe like just entering the administrative, just entering like the, the AP pool and then the principal pool and that kind of, that's where I'm, if I, you know, what I've heard is maybe about kind of getting a shot at administration.
All right. Okay, three-one-three-nine, educated misconduct. Employing misconduct.
I think they were, they thought.
Looks pretty identical. You guys okay with just moving it? Same review.
One thing, because whenever it refers to kind of the policy, I just wanna make sure we actually have it.
We did review this in our department as long as our process, so it has recently been reviewed, not by the board, but it was reviewed.
All right, check.
All right, staff discipline. To, um, to put down, three-one-three-nine, point zero one, staff discipline.
This one was updated and reflects the policy that exists.
All right, it's longer. Ours, so ours has that section, that third quarter drop about, um, I can enter into a confidentiality agreement.
It also says.
Right, which that's gonna be relevant to newer updates that they want to.
I, I like, I like ours.
I like ours too.
So if we keep ours following, not break them off?
Yep.
All right. Three-one-three-nine, zero one, now we're looking at three-one-four-zero there, and we have nobody over here yet. Okay, so three-one-four-zero. Suspension or dismissal of some staff.
And I have to open up the next match of attachments. Okay. Which one am I on?
Three-one-four-zero. So. Just a couple of options.
Yeah, unless that's been updated. I think it gave me one.
So ours is a little bit different.
We specify administrators and support staff.
Yeah, that's okay with you moving on.
I think this one is fine. I think we, we intentionally added administrators and support staff to not have a vocal areas probably.
You guys are okay with keeping what we have?
Yeah.
Okay, Paul? You got it over? Next one is resignation. Oh, we have a three-one.
There's a point oh, yeah, there's a thirty-one.
Disagreementary suspension without pay.
It's strictly statute.
Suspending? I have to review the statute to see exactly if.
Yeah, don't we already have a way for us to suspend somebody without paying, Ms. Green?
I have to talk to the board.
Yeah, it has to go to the board. They're entitled to a hearing if they lose pay. So you have to have, if you wanna suspend somebody ending the term of the investigation without pay, you gotta have a hearing simply on the suspension without pay.
Pretty tricky.
He wants to get out.
He's trying to drive us.
In the next hour, we might be done with it.
He's not excited.
He might be making up his head. And I just say that's construction. Those that have a contract with, uh, under the guise of the statute.
Okay.
In reviewing this, would you like us to update that? Or is that, are you comfortable with what you have currently? It's a little bit.
Fine, well, what's there?
Okay. So I would, I would follow the screens and leave and keep with what we have. So if we move on, I'm speaking to the board.
I'm good, I'm good.
All right, thirty-one-fifty.
Don't wanna add them.
No. Unless you watch.
No. Making sure I make my notes.
I think we have it.
Have you ever seen Paul's notes? He writes like, like, size two font.
Size two font.
I can't even read it. All right, next one's resignation. Neola has, um, two options.
Ours is, uh, ours is updated forward something, but ours is.
Two thousand and eighty-five.
Yeah, and ours was done in two thousand and fourteen, I think. We have option, um.
So ours is over.
We have option two at the bottom.
We just don't have.
You can't make.
You can't leave this stuff. I hear that later.
All right, Paul's gonna get mad at us. And you okay with, uh, what we have currently, or do you guys wanna update it?
I like ours almost like.
Oh, ours too. Paul, let's keep this one. All right. Move on to the next one, physical examination.
He's gonna keep, he's gonna say.
She's gonna say. I'm not gonna lie again.
It says two thousand and eleven, so they have.
I'm not lying.
No, that's not.
Oh, it's just one time. The next one's the same too.
You guys okay with it?
We can, we can ask, um, I guess that this is something I really have fun about, but we have it in our superintendent contract, the medical examination, but we don't regularly do this, right? No, 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 well, we do drug testing, but.
Drug test superintendent.
No, it says, no, his contract says a medical evaluation. His contract says, we can, right?
That's correct.
Annual, he's required, but do we do that for other employees?
We have had over the last, well, since I've been in this role, we have spent maybe six people for a fitness for duty exam, different than a EAP process, because we are concerned about their ability to perform based on something that may be going. The majority of them have had some significant health issues, which have been made aware of through the process.
Are you talking about like someone who, let's say, is a bus driver and is not gonna be able to manage the stairs?
That's standard practice, because that's all related to safety functions and the DOT regs. I'm talking about, here, here's an example. A long-term employee at a school teacher who all of a sudden doesn't recognize people.
Yeah.
Who doesn't recognize, who doesn't remember if they're supposed to manage their students when you walk or interrupt.
Right.
And, and supervisors and administrators will see a decline and eventually it'll get to a point where it's pretty significant and we will require a fitness for duty. We don't get any of the medical records back. What we get is, are they fit or not fit?
Okay.
And not, correct me.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, though, like, that also protects the employee, right?
Absolutely.
If we determine that you're not fit, we're not just terminating you without pay.
In fact, um, we have one right now that happened to be, um, a custodian. And remember, our board policy allows you to be on leave for a period of two years. So this particular person, we managed to enlist the family and a team around her. She's finishing for two years, I believe in October, but she's been able to, to benefit from our, um, benefits program, but she hasn't been able to work. So she went on leave two years ago and then she has two years to, and so ship her, I believe her leave is up in September maybe, and that'll be the end of her two years.
And then it protects them going forward too, because if they need to apply for security disability, all the documentation.
Disability, all those things.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And it's, they're very difficult conversations.
Yeah. Okay, next one is fitness for duty. Thirty one sixty one.
This one's the same. Yeah, we updated it. We updated it in two thousand four.
That's good. I'm okay. You guys good? Yep, it's pretty much the same.
Yeah, no, I, I got it. But for the next five policies.
Hey, while you guys are doing this, I don't know if you noticed, but several counties just, um, remarks in the, in some of that, probably exactly what we did.
Neola has a thirty one seventy.
We have that. We have an EAP.
Thirty one seven, there we go. Do you feel this is somewhere else?
It's in our.
Yes, in the work.
Yes, in the work.
So we don't need it. Pass thirty two ten, is that the next one?
Neola has a thirty one seventy oh one.
That's in the workplace.
Yep, you got that one's in the workplace, we passed it over. Thirty two ten, standards and ethical conduct.
Just re. Yeah, yeah.
We just redid?
We literally just voted on that.
Yep.
Okay, good. We're good for that.
We did this one too.
So we're going on from thirty one, thirty two ten to thirty two eleven, whistleblower protection.
Um, I think this is important just to hide the fact that this exists and that there is a, a line that people can call if they want to make a whistleblower complaint. And I, I'm jokingly saying this because I was in the office the other day when that phone rang and the person didn't know what to do because it had never rang.
First time they run and heard.
Yeah, what do I do? What do I do? And I was in the office with, how, there's a special, isn't it a problem? There is a special problem, but our staff doesn't know that obviously if it doesn't ring or she doesn't even know what to do in this case, I'm going to ring.
It usually comes in after hours.
Okay.
And messages are like, yeah, it rang for the first time, it's Ron has been hired.
I wasn't going to disclose to you.
It's like, do I answer this phone?
Yeah, yeah. Um, but I think it's important that stuff exists.
It looks like you're ringing the phone, you just have whistleblower.
Does that have the rigor?
Well, I mean, I, maybe if I had somebody send an email and it's identifying from and asked to be treated like a whistleblower, but like you just sent me an email with your name on it. I mean, I'm gonna audit it, but it's.
But it's still public records.
It's still public.
But if someone asks. It should.
You gotta try to flag it.
You'll have to flag it.
Do not produce it until the investigation's over.
Okay.
So, so that comes into our legal department and you guys review it?
Yeah, usually they're not whistleblowers, they're just employee complaints and we kick them to a car and we're missing.
Okay.
We've only had the one since I've been here that's been treated as actual whistleblowers. They're usually like, oh, this employee did this to me. And it's like, okay, that's just an employee complaint. They go to a car, not whistleblower.
Was that one recent?
I think we've released two or three while Amy was here.
Yeah, I think she did have two or three that she handled.
Yeah, that was four.
But since I've been here, COVID was here and we didn't have the one.
So we, we more recently updated this than, than Neola version, so I think that's.
All right, we're good. I like it the way it is. Where did we find that number at?
Yeah, we're supposed to.
Please get some of the bottom of the list.
You know, we don't.
It's actually. It should be on the website.
It's, okay, so our staff knows.
Maybe we, maybe we did, Paul, it was like you had nothing to do.
Well, the, okay, so the ethics hotline is, right, it definitely is anything, right?
The ethics hotline released in our.
Okay, there, but is under the links, I think, or?
See, this is the struggle I'm navigating.
Do we, you know, put it on the front page? Is that what you're saying?
No, I just think it's, it's important that that's standard, that's why they know they have the protection and, uh, cause you don't want to create that, that environment of, I can't say anything and I know there's something going on and if I say something and they've terminated. I know, so again, it's just, it's an extra level of protection for them to know that they can't say anything, that we encourage them to tell us if there is an issue so that we can step in and try to correct the issue, so.
Yes.
I will say, not that, not that the ethics line is the same line as that, but I will say, I think most staffs are aware of the ethics line, particularly if you're in like your teacher work room and stuff like that too. So at least there's some kind of. Are you still looking for that?
Probably, I am.
Always ringing.
I think it's not.
So once you find it, you tell us.
All the time.
I send it to all of them, say, hey, here's the whistleblower.
And then we have, I might just.
Ron, Ron had answered it.
We might call it just to see what she does.
Student supervision.
There we go, thirty two thirteen, good to go.
We just did thirteen.
Yep, all right, we're good to go, thirty two thirteen, move on since we just recently made the top one. Then we're going thirty two fourteen, so it's, yes, yes, yes.
Thirty two fourteen.
Okay, so we just call it gifts.
We, we still.
Yeah, they're, they're being more explicit with the language of the statute. Probably for gifts. Yeah, I don't think it hurts to make it more obvious.
Okay, I think there's a.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And this is beneficial.
I think we should update this one.
Well, yeah, we also have statute all right, so like what is it, twenty five and fifty bucks if we can't go over?
No, this is about.
I know this is.
Member, yeah, uh, you can, anything over a fifty under four, yeah, anything over a hundred.
And that's anyone. Anybody gives me fifty bucks?
Board, uh, the board policy for instructional is fifty, yeah.
No, but if anybody offers, so by law, if anybody offers me anything above fifty dollars, I have to report it. And if you don't, what is that, ethics?
It's by disclosures for you guys.
What if my grandmother gave me fifty bucks?
It only makes thirty one fifty, yeah.
But if my friends, if my girl's a hundred and fifty and they give it to me for free, that's a report.
Yes. I feel like some of this about the gifts is in our ethics policy.
I like it.
It probably, I guess it's probably all one twelve, yeah, it's one twelve, so.
Now, listen, the one thing I don't want is this instructional staff may not accept gifts from parents or students. Cause that is not fair. We get, listen, I used to get free stuff all the time, it's not a little inside of certain, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you want the kids that bring in like teacher appreciation baskets, you don't want to go, we can't.
Have you out there when the instructional staff member knows or with exercise of reasonable care that it's giving the influence?
Yeah.
So.
Well, I used to, I used to put the kids.
You got the kid that always gets an F, that brings you flowers every day, you have to start reading, try to.
I was really scared I would give it an F, bring me anything.
I used to give them really hard tests around the poor teacher appreciation, get an extra credit.
Yeah, like. And then the investigation will launch.
So do we need to be more explicit with our? Yes.
You guys, it's statutory, I do not know how many of your instructional staff are going to chapter one twelve, part three.
Yeah. I'm gonna be willing to bet not, but.
They may not know that it applies to all, all employees.
So let's go ahead and update it. What do you think? Just, I mean, it's clear.
Yeah, it's, it's not a bad idea just to have it out there and say, we warned everybody.
Yes.
That kind of covers it. I mean, if it does say plants, flowers, floral arrangements, it says everything.
Oh, the Neola one.
Yeah.
All right, we should be good.
All right, is that updated?
That, good to go. Paul, you get on that one?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on.
This one is revised in twenty.
Got forty minutes.
This one's been revised in twenty twenty two.
I think we updated it, um, based on making language because you have to get with the program.
Yeah, all right, so that was good.
We're good to go on that one. Next up, staff dressing and we're doing this right now so we can move.
No, this is staff.
This is for staff dress.
Oh, whatever.
Hang on, which one are we on?
We're on thirty two sixteen.
I'm gonna have to open my next. We're going through. I wonder what that date Neola had and.
I bet you can talk to someone that's supposed to give us.
It's.
Oh, the private address, yeah.
What would she be wearing?
What is that?
What would that be?
I don't even know. Stroke education process. Do we need this, Dr. Brendel? Do we need to update this thing if you feel comfortable with what we got? I mean, you know, I thought what we had was fine. Okay, let's move on.
I'm sorry.
I thought what we had was fine.
Okay, so we don't have a thirty two seventeen.
It's an older policy too. I mean, it's long.
Paul, they, they have the, uh, cappy out there that you can opt out under seven ninety one fifteen. We do not in this district opt out right now.
We cannot.
That, that's where we're protecting the medical, is that what you're, is that?
Yes, you could have a teacher who has their gun in their car on property right now. And you can opt out of that, but you gotta go through the process outlined in seven ninety one fifteen.
So this is gonna stop that?
If you, if you adopt it according to the seven ninety one fifteen. You gotta put people on there instead you don't allow it to be stored in your car.
Yep.
I don't think any of the.
All right, pass on that one.
We just did this a couple of years ago.
For what?
Evaluation of instructional personnel, this would be an interesting one.
I want to say it had to do with outdated language about.
I know, this is gonna be updated and changed too.
Tools that we use. I don't, Neola doesn't have any.
What makes you think this is gonna be updated and changed is there's statute or law that it was in relation to.
I mean.
Don't quote me on that, but I just feel like that was, I don't, I don't know if we passed or not, but that was definitely a conversation in the session.
So maybe then we can say for review, we're good and if Neola breaks that new update this year, then we'll have to take a look at it.
Like they, they would issue it if it is, but.
This is different than what we have and they lost one of the kick ins there was bringing, she doesn't have one of these above the ten of them.
Well, ours is different because not just like our other three thousand policies, we put administrative and instructional all together rather than putting all the administrative ones in the other section. So I think that's a hundred percent different, but what I'm saying is Neola updated theirs in twenty nineteen, we updated it in twenty twenty one. So they don't have anything new right now. If they are going to come up with something new, then they'll send that to us in the packet.
Right.
Check and make sure that it's all.
Thirty two twenty.
Go regs, you have thirty two twenty. All right, outside activities of staff.
That's one we don't have, we do not have.
Yeah.
Isn't this in?
Staff may not dedicate more time to outside.
I don't think we do this in ten.
Yeah, I think most of the stuff is listed in the ethics policy.
Yep, all right, look at that, thirty one thirty one, we'll want that one. Thirty one point zero through, three two three one point zero on research.
Wait, I lost one in here.
No, it's pretty good here.
We're at thirty two thirty one point oh one, which we don't have.
Did we do thirty two forty two?
No, we're at thirty two. The last one we did was thirty two twenty.
Okay.
But we're on, Neola's thirty two thirty one.
Thirty two thirty one, okay.
That's nice. If they make their own board from all their own work, they gotta bring it to us.
Yeah.
Little lady over there.
I don't know how often this happens. We just, like, what, people have some success?
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary to write them to call.
We don't pay them enough to not have success.
I agree, move on, we're skipping this one too, Paul, save into those political epitaphs.
Okay. I think we have this somewhere else, actually further on, maybe somewhere else.
We have those in.
In a different one of our searches.
List, well, I have to, we, we already talked about.
We already have this somewhere?
Well, I'm just trying to find it before I say.
It's common sense.
It's not common, common sense is not common.
No, just saying.
We have a candidates for public office under thirty five seventy five.
Okay, now which one are we looking at?
We're looking at thirty two thirty two.
There's, okay.
There, which we don't have.
We have this line somewhere though.
Yeah, there can't be one. We have this line somewhere, we discussed this one.
Paul's saying thirty five seventy five, wait, Paul?
For, that's a.
I'm listening to you.
Candidates for public.
Yeah, candidates for public office is thirty five seventy five. And we also have advertising policies under ninety two, I think something, nine, the nine thousand, that deals with political advertisements.
So I don't think the policy that they're referring to is the same one, like sixty has refers to sixty four eighty.
Yeah, thirty five seventy five.
Yeah, that's not our policy.
Neola does not have a thirty five seventy five. Neola does not have a thirty five seventy five.
All right, so some of those other ones are sort of related, but this one goes straight into, so we can, we can actually add this one or we can say.
Um, I think honestly this should be added and, uh, especially in the day H W eleven, um, I'm just gonna go worst case scenario, what does this look like if we didn't have this? Uh, so if you're in a government class, you could have potentially someone who's swaying, you might or the other, you could have them, right? I mean, if we don't have something that says that they're not participating in any political campaign. Let's talk about this.
Well, I mean, yeah, so instructional staff members who are employed by the school or shall not participate in any political campaign or an elective official while on duty.
That's right. But that's a, it doesn't do the class, it's any, it's any.
Initially, wear a shirt.
Right, same difference, there's. There is one part in here that if we do adopt it, I think it's a little strange. At the bottom, fourth paragraph of. Instructional staff who declare themselves candidates for public office for an elective office shall notify the superintendent immediately upon qualifying for election. The next sentence, I think is a little odd.
Why do you ask this?
Kind of the bot, the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, submitting a written explanation of how you're to conduct your campaign, like that's not.
You already have that.
Yeah.
It's somewhere else, it's thirty five seventy five.
Thirty five seventy five.
It's odd, dude.
It's odd though.
Well, I mean, it was.
Not to notify you.
We've been reading it recently because it was in the investigation report, the policies for business, sorry, you know, these are the policies that were brought up, so that's why I'm saying, I know, we know we have them in there, right? They were referred to.
So, and you guys may not agree with me, I also kind of think that declaring and telling the superintendent is a little odd too, because I don't know if most employers are even gonna be aware of that.
Well, just, but at the same time, if you announce it puts the superintendent.
I mean, it's public, everybody would know about it, but that's just me. I just, I think we're putting, uh, I just, I think that's kind of a weird one for people too.
Let's see what that statute says.
Bringing in a lot of, uh, the statutory language on political.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, is that part of the statute?
I don't know about. I don't know about notifying the superintendent, it may say you have to notify your agency or something, but it, you, campaigning on work time is prohibited.
No, yeah, no, I understand that, but I guess that, that whole piece is a little odd, I don't know.
The section up there, the section up there that deals with the. The issues going for political advertisement to the electors as statutory, and we ran into that with the millet. Where we, they were restricted on how we could advertise or go out. You can't spend funds.
So what are you doing here? You wanna add it, add it?
I mean, I, I'm in favor of having it, but.
You okay with putting it there?
It's gotta be the goal for us.
We have it, we have it. I just feel like we have, we have this language somewhere else.
It's in the sections.
If we have it, we need to go with it.
Inherited to the other policies that we already have.
Yeah.
I can go through it and see where we have what pieces and bringing back the board, if it's all in somewhere else. It might be in multiple places.
Okay, so we're gonna plan, all right, next up, thirty-two forty-two, professional development.
For some reason, I have, we have a ball of thirty-two next year, so I don't think I can completely policy that this because. And we have professional development under administration as well, so. We should probably compare the two, so our policy, well, forty-two and this policy, thirty-two forty-two are the same or is it one?
No.
So, we updated ours in fourteen, Neola's updated theirs in nineteen, all right, then what you're saying is that this is in the other places.
Well, I'm just trying to see what the two are, because we have, we definitely have it in two spots, so. One's for administration, one's for staff, so I just don't know if, if one, if the one for staff covered the administration, then we probably don't need. Well, forty-two, right?
Uh, well, there were some that we didn't have in, one, because they weren't, didn't just apply, we decided to not do the ban because three thousand had to do with all staff, but it was, if it was only, if it only applied to administration. Did one, it was a thousand.
I think.
What if it makes sense to condemn someone like a mental one?
Obviously so, I think.
Depends what people are gonna like for.
Thirty-two forty-two has more, it's like, more coverage on it than the other one, so.
Do we have this in this, this room?
Yeah, I mean, uh. I just had a note next to it that literally says repeal twelve forty-two, which I don't know, I'm guessing, we've looked at that a long way back, unless the book of the two of them have thought these are like the same thing.
Three-two four-three, professional meetings.
We have.
Sorry, which one are you on?
Three-two four-three. Neola updated it in two thousand seven. Do we need it, so?
Is that actually there?
It is actually on there.
You better, you better treat that in access time, okay?
It is on there.
Listen.
I don't think we need this, I don't think we need to think.
Heck, as in, we did not do three-two four-three, we're gonna do one on three-two eight-one.
Oh, God. Okay, don't.
We had this conversation.
Yeah, we did talk about this.
I know we have.
Yeah, we, we did this.
Three-two eight-one.
This one.
Yep, I did.
We definitely did this one, so we just.
All right, so we're going.
Disgusted, well, I think this is another one that crossed over, because a lot of these policies are the same, it's odd twice, they're just slightly different, and like, we need to.
We need to do that job.
Huh? Well, we need, it's, well, that's us, we're the ones that have to do it, do the better job. Well, let me try to find one, I don't think I can, so this one is personal property.
I, what I can't remember if this conversation is, was this the one that, that in the thousands, we said?
I think it was.
That we said, was it a Neola recognition, we said we needed it or did we have it, we, we don't, I don't think we had this in, I don't think we had this in the thousands.
Under, let me see, the hundred is zero, it's, we have use of equipment and services, and I'm not sure, maybe it might be in there.
It was something that we already discussed.
I know, I already discussed it, it's just.
I actually don't see, just in a quick search of personal property, I don't see any policies of the thousands or two thousands.
I think it came up in Neola, and we said it makes sense to be somewhere else.
Right. Because that's not as administrative. Do you have your notes from the thousands, Paul?
No.
Okay. So, maybe we decided we didn't want to do it, because there was, we had that conversation about if you bring your personal property, and then you have to register it with your building principal, maybe it would cover, help you cover your insurance, and it got really complicated.
Yep, I should say we'll do it.
Twelve eighty-one. Yeah, we had it, we had that.
So it came up when we were in thousands, so we said it didn't make sense. And we keep it down the line until we got here?
Neola updated some, it's not good. All right, next one up in here is.
So I'm wondering though, with this one, sorry, because I don't think we.
Yeah, I know.
Don't do it?
Thirty-three ten, freedom of speech in non-instructural setting.
I mean, this is a constitutional right, so we need a policy on it.
Maybe we can add it, we would like. Do you guys think you wanna add it, or do you guys, it's exactly what she said?
I, I think the constitution covers this, but it goes without saying.
I think we're gonna open ourselves up to.
Does policy actually restrict people, the bill, they're going to talk about it?
That's what I mean, right, let's not go there, let's, let's, we don't want.
I mean, I would like for people to work for us to not make inaccurate statements and say that their views represent their own views in office of the district, or refrain, I would like them to refrain from expressions that would disrupt harmony among coworkers, I'm just not so sure that we can. Enforce that. If it happens.
Absolutely, all right, so thirty-three forty, instructional staff accidents and workplace safety.
As a B P S party scene?
Yeah, thirty-three forty inside of her, not on Neola.
Oh, wait, wait, what?
Thirty-three forty is a B P S only policy.
Oh, I gotta help somehow.
Okay, this is good, I like.
I like it, so I can see why you would change it.
You okay with it, Paul?
Yeah.
You guys are good.
Are you okay with it?
Basically, the workers talk.
Yep. Just got to report mine, it's fourteen, you good, Jane?
Yeah.
Okay, move on.
I think the next one.
Thirty-three sixty-two, anti-harassment.
Maybe it's gonna be updated, and it looks like Neola's got a sixty policy here. That was updated in twenty twenty-one, and ours wasn't, and we're told.
I'm gonna guess, because we have such a long process with all the anti-harassments and the new title, nine, so actually, this is probably like on employee and some things that needed to be. Updated, the twenty twenty-one update, because that's when we had to do a lot of the things, because of the, the process is getting more complicated, and, well, they get more complicated, but also horrifying. So, don't you think, I mean, when we did all those, like, the twenty-two sixteen five.
Right, yeah, we did a lot of this.
Yeah.
Probably some crossover in language.
So we revised it twenty nineteen, this one's revised in.
Twenty twenty-one, so that's one is gonna be locked up.
This one's a little bigger in here, the screen. So, just sort of making notes, three ones, thirty-three six-two, anti-harassment's gonna go to, um, history review.
Mr. Susan, this is getting appeared, where we had some in the thousands areas that were saved.
Yeah.
So, can we cross-reference them to the thousands areas, but we don't need to have it in two spots, do we?
No, that's what I'm saying, the screen.
The handful that you said you were about to talk about, that's one of them.
Okay, yeah, well, we don't have one in the thousands, but it's.
So Neola did, so I.
This is the one that we said we didn't want to have it here.
Right, I, that's why I didn't remember what you all decided back then, that there's.
No, I think we said don't do it, if it's somewhere else.
Right, but then where we, we didn't want it in the thousands, we did it long better in three thousands, because it was all for all staff.
Should we look at it and see where it's? Thirty-three eighty, threatening behavior towards staff members, at Neola, it has not been updated in.
And it's the same.
It's exactly the same, are we okay with keeping it?
I am.
All right, move on, so. Thirty-four ten, compensation.
Neola does have, it ended up being there last year.
Yeah, this is, I, we don't touch this with ten before.
Oh, thank you.
This is like.
This is gonna change, because of all the statute.
Is there a way we can send this to the screen?
Should we wait?
I think we can just wait on Neola's update this year.
That's okay. Can I comment on this?
Yeah.
So it's all statute, it's all the compensation statute, it's all identified in the contract, so.
With the new statute, they removed a lot of the percentages and stuff now, so, but it's gonna be updated by Neola, is my guess, but we can wait.
Okay, to wait until that happens.
No Neola update.
All right, so we got that for thirty-four ten, but we got thirty-four nineteen, proof of health care plans. Yeah, I don't know if we're gonna get into this, because once we start flying around with our healthcare plan, we'd have to come back and change the policy, so it starts talking about percentages and compensation and stuff like that. We already performed a lot of this, I would already have it.
Yeah. All right.
All right, now, past that one, um, then we have this. This again is like, I mean, the line is. No, I would, I, we all know the rules, we all know all this stuff, we're not gonna create a self-funded vision plan, D A T plan, like, term care, like, we don't.
So I think the point is, is, I think, just to look at that, is so that, like, if we have a self-funded health plan, we're not getting any of the employees' medical data.
Right, right.
Yeah, the care, yeah, we'll be a parent.
We don't need this, it opens us up to. So we move on, three-four-one-nine-point-zero-two, privacy.
That's all.
Yeah, sure, yeah, let's discuss the differences in the insurance plan, so we.
Three-four-one-point-zero-three, score notification of a work care, those are certain obligations on the board, I wouldn't have that.
We have, which one are you putting that, sorry?
Three-four-one-nine-point-zero-three.
Got a workable care act.
Yeah, I. We don't want our employees thinking that they can go and enroll in the health insurance marketplace, there's a lot of issues that we have there, like, how do we just make that?
Do we have to?
Do we have to?
Well, it says the workshop, the kind of poison health insurance options available through the, through the marketplace.
Uh, our, our employees have the option of the climate coverage, if they would like, and they can go out and do what they like. But we don't want to advertise the programs to companies, because if we advertise the health insurance marketplace, then we start, it starts to be, you know, fourteen days from what the start date, I just. We're dealing, I'm dealing with this in two counties right now, that are, that half of their employees don't take the healthcare plan, which is so bad.
I don't think you can go off the marketplace because then, like, we have, not, not the price.
I know a lot of our employees would actually get better plan at a lower rate because of their, um, stipends, I mean, or their, um.
Subsidies.
Subsidies.
Oh, right, if they were getting it.
And that's a great point where almost.
I think if they get a subsidy, then we get it with them.
Right, so there's a lot here, I would, so that's, I would just do it. We can move on to thirty-four twenty, which is benefits. And we have that?
Yes.
This part's pretty.
These are gonna be specific to each district, right?
Yeah, so I would keep ours.
So, we have Neola's.
Yeah, I would, I would be careful and just keep ours, because we already have it to find out. I mean, we always have staff relooking it to make sure that it's accurate, but.
It's probably just to.
The health insurance.
Looks like we went to option one. We got a couple additions.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. I would keep it here, if anything, I would, I'm gonna leave this, Paul, if you can send this over, you tell me, just review, just make sure that it all, what she's doing.
That's good, slightly off-topic question, just made me think about that. The addition, us, I'm sorry, us providing the F S A to our staff, was that one year?
The additional F S A?
Yes. That was just this quarter.
All right, so we're like.
Thirty-four twenty-two.
Those are negotiations around the increase of the.
So thirty-four twenty-two is benefits for non-represented staff, I don't think we need to add this to that.
I know, I didn't have that one in yet.
So thirty-four twenty-two, just talks about salaries and benefits for instructors.
Oh, that's like a non-marketing unit, pretty, well, ours, so ours, because ours is just benefits, benefits, it's not benefits for instructional staff, like the Neola version, our benefits are the same for. When you get a bargaining, you're not a bargaining unit, it's all the same.
Are you okay with not adding this one? It's not. Thirty-four thirty?
Ours was revised when Neola revised. But it looks different.
It looks different.
We had this conversation around it.
Well, we have Neola's two thousand and two template on the bottom of ours, and theirs is.
No, it's revised October two thousand and fourteen.
I know, but just the template at the bottom of it, it says the Neola version, it's the two thousand and two version versus theirs on this policy of two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, we did our. Maybe there's.
Yeah.
Because we didn't adopt.
We just didn't adopt their version of, or maybe, Paul?
No.
I guess it came out in December two thousand and fourteen, and we wrote it in October, I don't know, so.
It's probably, so, do you, like, do you guys get flagged when they update these, or?
Yeah, they should, they should update, and we push them out to all of them.
Okay, so, my.
I wasn't on those until recently.
Yeah, not you, yeah, yeah, not you, not literally you, sorry. So, yeah, that's probably why it was brought up in fourteen, and then the board chose not to adopt.
Were you showing that it's updated, and we didn't talk to them, so.
Well, like, if you look at our policy at the bottom, it shows that we're using Neola's two thousand and two version, but if you look at our Neola version here, initially, the bottom, it's.
It's completely different.
It's, and it's completely different than ours.
I don't know, like, superintendent authorized to give following text of instructional staff, and usually it's up to a certain number of days, it kind of, I don't even know.
We have the, um, the, see, there are hyperlinks for the leave of absence guidebook? So that's a whole.
On ours.
Book on, I'm trying to see when did that update, that's on, like, these are this kind of, these kind of leaves, this is how you take them, this is what you have to do before you come back, because we looked at that, I remember looking at that during COVID, because people use all different kinds of leaves during COVID.
The guidebook was last updated in March of twenty-two.
The, the, please guidebook, yeah. Okay, we're just, yeah.
At the bottom of the first page, it says updated March twenty-two.
Okay. Oh, yes, right there, in black. So that is going to update. Frequently.
So we have cash?
I think referencing that book is the smartest thing.
Yeah, because any updates that we need to change are gonna be updated and it's kind of like this hack to pull the drug here, pull that.
So what you're saying is, is in ours, it says, see the guidebook here? Is that how you continue to do it? So just keep what we have?
Yeah.
So, Ms. Green, if you can just make sure that everything's good on that one, and we're good to go over here. All right, the next one is FMLA leave, if you look here, it gets very definitive as to what it is, how much, all these events, I think this is a considerable update since the last time that we came through.
Yeah, but ours actually has a link to headline.
Yes, but.
Yeah, Ms. Green said that doesn't work.
She just, it needs to be, um.
Is there a way you can take this policy, Ms. Green?
That FMLA is all in that guidebook that was just referenced in the previous policy, it's all there.
And we can make sure that the link is.
Do we need to swap out that link for headline to the guidebook?
Yes. Is that a technical change?
No.
No, because there's words.
The guidebook is gonna be a significant change, so.
Okay.
So we'll bring it back.
All right, so.
Does the guidebook, does it kind of work like a mandatory procedure, right, so we can change them as needed without?
How is it, where is it incorporated?
Uh, no, it just said refer to first specific.
So, yeah, as long as it's not incorporated.
Okay.
Then, um, it's more like, it's under the superintendent's authority, if it gets incorporated like the directory workplace, then it's part of your rule, you gotta do it.
Okay. All right, ready to move on? What can we get in the next six minutes?
The actual, we should, we updated after Neola, and it's gonna be in that book as well.
Domestic violence.
So if you guys move to, so for FMLA leave, what do you, what would you guys like to do, just keep it the same way, change the updated guidebook link, Ms. Green? Are you gonna look at this policy and make sure that it matches with anything else?
We'll look, but we do need to update.
Okay, all right, and then you're gonna have to bring that back to us because of that, because, okay, I, I agree with you, Ms. Green, would you file through this thing? Three four three zero point zero two is inside of our, um, I think here, domestic violence leave.
Yeah, we updated Neola, and again, it's going to be referenced in that book.
There's no leave, right?
So I guess where I'm getting confused on is why does the, why does our policy show Neola two thousand and seven, and you go to this one and it shows Neola two thousand and eight, the copyright on it, so.
There hasn't been a change.
Because we, because we didn't, it's probably just technical, but also, not weak, I won't hear, but.
Also, it's probably just not changed to copyright date when they updated it, the revision date is.
The revision date is.
Because they revised it, and they even revised it in two thousand and nine, which I'm just gonna bet was probably based on Neola's.
I mean, I'm sorry, they're not in the job, did it completely?
Are there any changes? I mean, I'm not seeing any changes. From what we have, I think here it's pretty much.
Just others.
They have, they have a D and an E under the. At the bottom. Wait, no, actually.
It's just, it's.
They have wooden shafts.
Yeah. It's B, letter B.
Okay. Ms. Green, you wanna take a look at it, make sure that there's nothing that needs to be changed?
The last one looks like it's probably.
So next one, sick leave, inside there, three four three zero point zero three, Ms. Green, do we need this?
All of our sick leave is. Is in contract, and it's also in policies elsewhere.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
They're also in our compensation policies, everything is outlined in that.
Okay. So we can pass, so personal leave is gonna be the same way, correct?
I would imagine all of them.
Illness.
Yes, all of that is outlined in our compensation policy. Our employment policy, we, we did.
Illness or injury in the life duty is being included.
Jury witness.
Yeah, complication, military, professional. So you got all this, right? Jury witness, job-related expenses. Here we go.
You don't have this all. I think it's in the travel item. The professional, like the outgoing travel, it's all sits in the financial world, but that's all.
Job-related expenses inside there. All of you drive straight up here.
I know, I asked that when I first got on the work, because I did it in my old position, and everyone looked at me like I was crazy, I'm like, oh, sorry, because I was driving so much. But I wanted to take out a lease, but you know, like, sorry, it was not as much.
You have a right to do it, and it's not fair, because, look, I mean, I'm, I'm two miles from here.
A lot more out from you. Sorry, I didn't know, I was just driving to, like, to the site.
So, like, if you guys, I just want you to know that you won't do that, you have every right to do it. Yeah, I don't want you to feel like you can't.
That's my gift to the community.
That doesn't come out of your, your life, it's up to you.
All right, so I'm going to double it, and you're saying it's just sick, maybe under the church, maybe sixty-four eighty, which is.
It's not listed with that, it's named.
Sixty-four eighty is called the church, that's the closest one that I've been typically, but.
We have authorized travel reinforcements, sixty-five fifty. But this says including travel expenses, so.
So you feel very confident, Ms. Green, that it's.
I'm, I'm looking, I'm actually looking at one of my travel forms, um, because there's a manual attached to it, but of course, on my little computer, I can't get to it.
Was it okay if we give this to you and try to find it somewhere else?
Sure.
We're gonna spend all day trying to figure something out. All right, remote work.
I did that, yay! We both have.
Who are we, who are we, no, they're bringing it down.
Did we go on?
There's no workshop.
On the thirty.
Same process.
It's in the process, we did all of them.
We already.
It was on.
May thirty, you know, May thirtieth.
I was gonna tell them.
They're not instead going, we're almost there, we're almost there. Can you go and hire people knowing your, before you.
It looks like that one is too long for us.
Half of it is easy, to be honest.
Because it's not approved, it's not on any job description today.
Okay, 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 okay.
Start moving on, all right.
Complaints against staff?
Yeah, thirty-five, thirty-one, I got unauthorized to work stop. We have committed a running certain basic services to.
Yeah, that's, that's statute.
This is statute.
Yeah, you're not, they're not allowed to. The stop work.
Like a strike?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
You want me to add it?
I think every educator is well aware of that law.
You guys want to put it in or no?
No.
No, it's just good policy, it's just for policy's sake.
All right, complaints against instructional staff. We just kind of.
We've worked with this management.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good to go. We actually like ours, actively, personnel file.
Oh, and the next one is the one that we have that they don't have.
Thirty?
We also have thirty-five eighty, we don't have thirty-five eighty.
Do you guys want me to update these or do you care?
I, I care.
For. For thirty-five seventy-five. So, my problems are ready, so. I, I just, I think the first sentence is unrealistic, because people are gonna be aware of it. And also, I don't know anybody who can write a written summary of their campaign plan, so I think it's important to write candidate shall adhere strictly to the statute, I think that's important to document, but I kind of feel like the rest of it's a little unrealistic.
Well, I can see why, and I, and I hear the objections, because it's like ninety percent of people go to the office, figure it out later if they have to, and make it look right, but I think there is something that we should have to tell the superintendent, like, you're gonna go to office, just so they know where these are. Requisitions, is there a way we can get them all over there? Is that even, is that legal to hold somebody who has to do that? To say you gotta tell the superintendent, because if it's legal, then maybe we just go for supervisor reflections, and when they have their.
I mean, it's in Neola's other templates, so they ignore their own influential statute.
Maybe we could talk to.
I think it's fine to.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have an issue with saying, hey, you know, I just qualified for school board or family commission.
I guess what I'm saying is, like, let's be real. Did we all tell superintendents that we're running for office? No, we all need, I, no, I mean, I'm not, I'm just.
Yeah, I was working at the set.
So someone could use that against somebody. Exactly, and it's silly, it's a silly thing to hold against somebody, maybe we could put encouraging language in there if you would like.
I'll probably get to you anyway.
I mean, I feel like it's not something I would have thought to do if I was an employee, I was deciding on the office, and I'd hate to then get penalized later, because I just didn't know.
It's true.
To me, would be, would be helpful to someone who works for us, who's running for any office, to have them all in one place. The one about not, not soliciting campaign funds, not advertising, because, you know, even like as a sub, I think I parked in the parking lot with my candidate cam for school board on the side of my, man, was I violating school board policy? Yeah. You know, and there was, I, I remember Amy even having a question about someone who was.
No, I really would rip my back.
Like, an incumbent, yeah, what do you mean, employee employee? Yeah. So I, I mean, it's not, for having all, like, if you're, if you're a candidate and you come on school board property, you're picking your kids up in the car, like, are you violating school board policy because you're campaigning on school board property while you're picking up your kid? And you're, because you're, I mean, like, wouldn't they put it all in one? Because if you were a candidate and you were an employee or somebody you wanted to know.
I, I think it should all be together, obviously, I think this whole.
And Neola doesn't even have it all together.
No, I, I did want that to, I think that's false.
Do you have a preference of which one?
Add it to that one.
I mean, this, this actually is for people who work for us who are running for office, if that makes sense, you know?
Yeah.
Do you want to adopt Neola's number or do we borrow?
Neola's got more numbers, we do, right, or no?
Well, they did not have the thirty-five seventy-five, they had your here, whatever that other one might.
Oh.
Put them all in one spot.
Yeah, five, five most appropriate spot, put it, we're good. Three five seventy-five candidates for public office, supporting political candidates, these are all part of that.
It's all, this all should be together.
All in deficit, right, we get down to three five nine zero personnel file.
Political activities.
We just put all those. And then personnel file, um, I was looking this over, I think it's pretty, can you take a look at it?
We just got eight and one, too.
Perfect, so I'm good on that one, everybody good? And then job descriptions? We have ours, very, very, like, we make our own job descriptions, that's it.
Yeah. Amazing, that's pretty much what's. Very great.
I think, in looking at it, I think that they have here, I think that, now, I think this.
Actually, I like.
You like it?
I like our vague one, just like.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, this gets us restricted.
Yeah, this, this one restricts us a lot, this one.
I'm good with keeping thirty-six hundred if you guys are.
Yeah.
Is that the, that's the last Neola policy, right? And then we have one more.
Yep, thirty-six ten, staff reward recognition, develop staff, award, administrative procedures, program, sounds very vague.
It's a background latest.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had all kinds of award, but there are administrative procedures.
Unlike what, that's a little weird, too.
I don't really understand why it's a policy.
A policy, yeah.
I think somebody probably did this to prove they care about staff.
Can I say that the objects of taking it out.
No, no, I, I hear you, but it just seems a little silly, because it does, again, it's like, does it have weight? Let's, let's.
So we have had all different kinds of things, there's been like the five-year pin, the ten-year pin, it was back and back, I don't know what it used to do, but we had, um, like our club used to do a theme pin, and then the board members could give out, we could give out, we had. All different kinds, and we have, of course, we have our employee peer, teacher peer, graduation, all of that.
One of the things I was talking to, which I reuse that they said is, is, could we have those books and works? Here's what we have, we have people who come up, it's, you have twenty, thirty, forty years of their life, we have them coming to me, and it's awesome that we came to this weekend. And the issue though is, is that once they're gone, they're gone, and I wonder if there's a way for us to take those people that are above, like, say, thirty years or twenty years, and give them just a hundred brackets, under five bucks. Would cost us, we could get that within a scope, it'd be nice to do something like that. Anyway, we're.
The day we came in.
Like does ours need to have a foundation?
Like a garden or something. I mean, it'll, it'll exceed eventually, but like walking into BTS with like tile.
That's it, the wall coming in, it's just, it's a way of saying, we care about you.
Yeah, it signifies that being a foundation, that really what has built our school district, I love it.
I would love to do that and do a, like, because there's, who was it, Sal was announced for forty-six years, you said? Why not?
I think like, it is the. I mean, everybody who retired was gonna retire, like, for that thirty years, but like, I think with the thirty-five, like, every year when they do the awards, when they give the awards, I'll tell you by the next, I'll tell you by the next board meeting. They do their administrative over the most year, the teacher with the most years, and the support staff with the most years, and they're, they're always overboard, always boring for a while, so, let's not get it happening anymore.
So I think, I think twenty years is enough to start this.
Yeah, I think twenty, I think twenty.
We can't even retire in twenty.
Sue, Dr. Green, will you get that?
We're lucky if we keep.
Yeah, I mean, we did a memorial wall at the track, Lake Echo Beach, and it's been the biggest hit in, well, it's forever, and it's just a wall of bricks like that. Definitely would be done something else.
Have them come up and do it, too.
Sue, whatever you think is the most easy to facade on the outside wall already and cost-effective, Sue's like. Sue figured it out.
I'm thinking of how this could be a structural component of one of your buildings.
Yeah. We need some rehab.
I like it.
So, anybody else have anything else to say? Good to go? Don't go.
I just have one question, and Paul might have gotten it, but I didn't get it, thirty-three ten, I'm not sure if you wanted that, did you want that?
They passed.
They passed it, I think. Okay, thank you.
Yes, too. Thank you for asking. Russell, do you have anything? No? Dr. Endell?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, thank you.
So the next chapter is the four thousands, but we don't have four thousands, do you, so chairman, are you asking us to look at them and see if we want them?
Well, I think we just go on to five thousands, because we just come back to the four thousands, we gotta just get our policies that we have.
Yeah, we've gotta get.
Oh, no.
And since, um, the four thousands are the non-instructional people, as we're reviewing all of these, and I have twenty-one on my list, um, we will encompass all staff, not just instructional staff, because previously the three thousand for instructional, the four thousand for support. So we're just gonna make them all, all, so we should, we're, we're telling us, if we start looking at the four thousand later, we're probably not making anything, and it's.
We shouldn't.
Yes, because it's my understanding that three thousands and the four thousands are identical, three thousands are for instructional, four thousands are for support, and that's why the district several years ago took them out.
Yeah, so five thousands, I'll start looking at it.
Okay.
And we'll start that process.
Thank you.
Green, you good? Neil, did you need us for anything?
Just you.
Okay. Okay, all right.